Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Pamela Young, Garrisonville District.
Sarah Chase, Valmet District.
Elizabeth Warner.
Curtis Wyfford, District.
Holly Hazard, Harwood District.
Patricia Healy, Rockville District.
Irene Hollerback, Acquah. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Motion to approve. Is there a...
Madam Chairman, I'll second it and I would request a revision to the agenda to add a closed meeting at the end to discuss personnel matters and superintendent's evaluation as permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 and Virginia Code Section 221-69.
Does the motion maker agree to the amendment?
Yes.
Right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Could we discuss that first? Just... So, my only concern is time. And so, can we put a time limit on when we will finish tonight? So that some of us might have to stay... I mean, this closed session, if it's not starting until 9:30 or 10, that's kind of difficult. Is there a way we could do that first?
No, I think we have people that are our staff members that are ready to present this evening that I think that that would be stronger. Why don't we say no longer than 30 minutes? If at the end of the meeting, we have gone longer, we can certainly modify the agenda. However, I would want to say half hour for that particular meeting at the most.
Perhaps if we start by nine? Should we be starting until 9:30? We're here, you know, I didn't know about this before I came, so...
I have an appointment tonight, I'm due right after the meeting, but I didn't know that I would stay for it. But I just need a turn.
Madam Chairman, I'm certainly open to putting this on another night if things go slow. But I think it's up to us as a board, if we want to address the items on our agenda efficiently, if we've addressed them thoroughly but efficiently, I think we can be done, you know, before 9 o'clock. Certainly, that's two hours from now.
Let's go with that for now and then we will keep our eyes. Also, there are many agenda items. If we have ourselves ready, I will... Let's vote on the motion and then I'll just make a final comment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will, again, as we've been doing, as we do each agenda item, I will go around to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. Because as we know, with this, we want to make sure as much of our language is picked up by, so that the public can hear that. Of course, as we go forward, and Dr. Kizner will be giving us an update on future things, we will be looking at how we can conduct our board meetings going in the future. We will be discussing that or getting more guidance in the days to come. So, speaking about that, Dr. Kizner, you're up first with our superintendent's update regarding COVID-19.
Thank you. So I want to go over two things and try to be respectful of your wanting to be done in a reasonable time line. Don't read every slide. The first thing I wanted to just let you know, we've been doing surveys. And we did a parent survey a couple of weeks ago. About 16, 1700 parents responded, which, you know, I didn't have a number in mind. But 16, 1700 parents responded. And this gives you a breakdown. It would make sense that preschool, we would have less. And then, pretty much, pretty representative of the grade levels. That's all. So we wanted to know, from a parent perspective, how was... What was the experience within remote learning? And what could we learn as a school system from your experience as a parent? And there were some very important takeaways, which I think is going to be very important to us. So we looked at communication and, what I would just say, at a division level, there was... I think they felt there was overall good communication. That's probably a consistent letter that went home every week on a Friday. So people, parents were aware that there was indications of good communication at the school level. I will tell you, I'm not going to show you this tonight. The principals will be getting... Rebecca Towery, who many of you know, she's the author of this report. She will be giving out to the buildings their feedback because there's some variation among the different buildings. And last Thursday night, I had my parent advisory committee. And I would say that there was pretty good level of consistency from what people were reporting and what that small group of parents were also reporting. And again, teachers, parents before that, the communication for teachers varied. And at times, parents were frustrated because of not having a higher level of communication. So what are some of the challenges for any of you who have children, especially young children? I think it relates to a lot of this, distractions in the home. As we already talked about, not only do you have your school age children, you may have a college age child, you may have to work yourself. So distractions in everybody's home has different areas in which children could learn, if you look, learn. Again, lack of support, frustration with opulent nature of work. And so, now, I just wanted you to know, there were a lot of positive comments. But for us to grow, we want to focus on all the comments that would help us grow. Lack of support, frustration with opulent nature of work, insufficient critical pedagogy, lack of cohesion for such, for things such as emails. One thing that I heard, and you'll see this a little later, sometimes parents would get multiple emails from their teachers and that, sometimes overwhelming. So sometimes it's not so much, "I didn't get any, I got too many." Okay, that could just be wrong. Most parents spent, you know, one to two hours a day on the continuity of learning. Majority responded to kid that parents did not feel this was for continuing to make academic progress for the first student for which parents responded. So we had parents do multiple responses if we had another one. 24.9%, they were neutral on topic. 34% agree with this, or strongly disagree. Again, I know you don't like to read this. Again, we want to get a sense from parents. They felt connected to their child's school, and you can see the numbers. I've been sending a lot of articles, national articles and state articles, were pretty much aligned from where we're seeing. The parallel response of teacher class connection, so they were closely aligned. So, another survey is going out to parents Friday. That survey is going to get into more of their concerns or questions that they would like answered before we open up school. Okay? So this was just to get a sense of the experience that ended on May 29. And, but this is also very helpful. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I sent it to Chris. I don't know if he has numbers. But we have significantly more students in our summer learning program, double than what we had last year. And this is what we expect. So we're having two sessions, three weeks, Friday, yesterday. And then after fourth of July, another three weeks. So our goal and objective is introducing new work and also reinforcing previous work. So that, I feel really good about, just because how many parents signed up to their children for summer learning? Okay, we'll just go to the other panel. Any questions on this?
Yes, I have a question. How many...
Two.
So, you did get a response in the second language?
In Spanish, yes.
Okay.
And we broke down, I didn't show you, but we asked demographic information, we asked the children ID and so on. So we have a sense of their own. Okay, so today, you know, at 2 o'clock, the governor presented phase process for returning to school. We're going to get into that, but you also know, we just completed, on April 29, we started the global task force, which included parents... Oh, I'm sorry. So we had a task force with 83 members that included teachers, parents, support staff, administrators and community workers. That work finished on last Friday. So I'm giving you very preliminary comments. And then it'll be a much more detailed report. If you had a chance to look at the information I sent you from the DOE, you can see their documents about hundreds of pages. Our documents aren't going to be hundreds of pages, I assure you. But we'll have much more than this. So, the primary focus was to highlight the key guiding questions, concerns and strategies, supporting the opening of the 2021 school year and the continuation of learning under COVID-19 virus health restrictions. And there were five primary areas, academics, emotional wellbeing, finance operations and systems, staff support and equity planning. So what I... So what I'm going to do just now, again, I'm not going to spend time reading this all to you. But when you go through the slides and for the public that might be listening a lot, it's on our board docs. I just asked Rebecca to lift key points from the documents. And I shared with you previously, the documents they've used to guide their conclusions. So you see that one thing obviously we have to do is know where the kids are. And we have to assess children, we have to look at where they were in March and where they are when they come back in August, and so on. So a little bit data alignment of curriculum. If you look at some of the documents that I sent you this morning from the DOE, you know, different school systems are handling it different. But curriculum work, we may have to adjust the curriculum. I will say now this, and I should have started off with saying this. We have to think completely different when school starts. It's not how school was last March, February, January and so on. What I mean by that, don't be thinking of a starting time and an ending time. And this will make more sense. Don't be thinking that all kids have to have five and a half hours of instruction, okay? Don't think that kids have to have, based on SOQs, X amount of hours of reading, X amount of math. Don't be thinking that it's an art room and a music room. There'll be art and music in some cases, but the art and music teachers might be going to the classrooms. And you'll see why this will become more important as we move on. So again, you see the curriculum work, that's one, Jerry. Staff support, substantial training and effective pedagogy for remote and multi-modal learning, social distance structure, consider the adoption of flexible staffing models that impact our principal staff. So today, we had a meeting at Shirley Hart, that big professional development room. All the principals were there, all of the key central office leaders were there. Our nurse was there, food service, transportation. It was a good meeting, we kept it under 50, we six feet apart, people had masks. And we spent two hours going over this and doing a lot of brainstorming and discussions. And every building has its unique challenges. And Lila White, who had a planning, he's working with buildings. It was principals to calculate how many kids you could have in your room six feet apart. Okay, and things like that. So we're pretty organized in our approach. And I will say this, I feel pretty good that our work, starting in, really started in March, but leading the group in April, talking to a lot of my colleagues, is giving us, I don't want to say a head start, but an advantage over others. I would also tell you, as we did the continuity of learning plan, you're going to hear a lot of people talk about other school systems. I just want to remind you, even in Region 3, but definitely in Region 4, Labor Day is later next year, or this upcoming. There's almost a month between when we open up August 10 and when Labor Day is, which I think is like September 8, something like that. So sometimes you may talk to a friend or a colleague that tells you what they're doing in their school system. Just ask the question, "When are they opening up?" Because if you're opening up after, you know, Labor Day, you have time to do other things that, you know, we may not have in the time. Because everybody got this plan today. You know, so, you know, there's still, there's still school systems that are still operating their fourth quarter today. But today's plan was not staggered by based on when you close your school. So flexible staffing, consider options for staff with identified childcare concern. And we're working with partners like the YMCA and others. This is all things that we're backing in. Commit to regular multi-modal communication with staff. I want, I sent you an article back in March that I sent all the staff. It was written by a professor at Blue Springs Community College in the Shambo Valley. And he's a communication specialist. And he's reminded us that in crisis, you can never hold a communicator, that people want to hear what's going on. All right, finances of operations. So today, everybody who came to the building at Shirley Hart, we all had a completed health survey. Okay? And that health survey goes to your immediate supervisor. In my case, it goes to the school nurse. Okay? And based on the health survey, we may have a conversation with you. Okay? It's not a, it's not a temperature check, you know, anything like that, but it's the health screen. Necessary adjustments to operations and wheels and transportation. When I get into the greater details, remember, everything I say about the classrooms, apply for the school buses. Okay? There's one little footnote which I'll talk about second. Secondly, technology will play a significant role to help students. Learning will need to be in multi-modal format, consider additional staffing. So I just need to say, because I say what I need to say, is that our school system, like every school system, got this plan. And as you see this plan, this plan is going to have some additional resource requirements. Okay? If we're doing six feet apart, our early analysis is that that's eight to 10 kids in a classroom. Okay? And so, if we're taking an art room and a music room and turning that into a classroom, we're going to have an adult in. Okay? It could be the parent, it could be the art music teacher, but we need to have a teacher there. If we are going to have a flexible schedule, if a working parent would be home with their child, we're still going to have children that need to be at the school. So my point being is that we are going to have to look at budget. And again, the plan that will, that will be much greater, will be flushed out for you intuit. But I'm just giving you an idea that when you look at what the governor proposed, just be thinking, or at least I'm thinking of, how we make sure children are learning? How should, how we make sure we're covering all the other needs, obviously the health needs? But also, what are some of our limitations? Again, our CARES Act was only 1.6 million. Okay? And spot, so you don't have to go far. They receive over a million dollars more than us, even though they have about 5,000 less kids. So we have some greater restrictions. Consider, okay. All right, social, emotional, very important. We've been reading the articles. Anxiety, so we talked about that today. Some of the staff were real nervous coming back. It was the first time we were able to do 50 people. Okay? And we talked about that. I mean, you know, I was nervous approving that we're coming back today. Okay? And we worked with our cleaning, with John Anderson, to make sure that room was spotlessly clean. We did all these things. But I would definitely understand how children are going to feel and how parents are going to feel sending their kids. And how staff are going to feel coming back. So again, I won't go over all this, but our social, emotional design, students, staff and parents. Were struggling or had different learning needs on March 12. And those struggles or different learning needs have not changed. So in our planning, we will look at, and also, equity means, I know you noticed, it's not, all kids may not have the same amount of face-to-face instruction. Okay? And so we may have children with certain disabilities, certain learning needs, certain CTE classes that is, you know, pretty much very difficult, if not impossible to do virtually. Children who are English learners and so on, they may need to be in the buildings more than some other children's. Based on the six feet social distancing. That is the fact, but regardless of what phase you look at, that's the constant health variable. Again, this is... All right, so it's a three-phase plan. We don't really need to talk about phase one anymore, but we moved into phase two. Okay? So phase two options, so two things, all right. Phase two says that you could, as long as you follow all the social, health requirements, I'll go over that in greater detail. You can have children preschool to third grade in your buildings. Dr. Laynow, state superintendent, has also indicated that superintendents could seek a waiver if you have a valid justification for older students to be there and you're also able to meet all the health requirements. Okay? But for now, this is the exact language from the governor's presentation. Phase two also means all students may receive in-person instruction and have to be, and can be accommodated with strict social measures in place. Okay? And so our summer learning in state, our phase one, so summer learning and our phase two summer learning right now is all remote learning. But we may introduce after July 4th, the second session, to bring some children in for the direct instruction, the face-to-face instruction, again, meeting for the health requirements. And phase three is, again, no one is going to state that phase three starts on this day. But what you did hear, what you will hear, is that there's a very high probability that sometime in mid-late July, but definitely by August. I shouldn't say definitely, but higher, higher probability that we will be in phase three when school schedules are open. And then, remember, phase three is not normal. Phase three doesn't say everything's back to the way we would be. Phase three, beyond phase two, divisions will resume, resume new normal operations with future guidance. When the governor lists the state date emergency, then things get back to normal and waivers stop. Then there's a whole nother waiver. The state superintendent's been authorized to give the waivers under the emergency. Okay, so phase three provides massive flexibility at any given time. So you may, or I may, or the nurse may tell us, or the health department may tell us, in Stafford, you have an increase of this, you may need to look at more of a phase two. Even though it's not requiring to have masks for students, you might be saying for certain classes and so on, so you could go more restricted, you can go less restricted. You can say the six feet. Now, I will say, you're going to see the language throughout, is six feet when possible, or something like that. In some cases, no, I had a question asked, I did a remote town hall meeting. And one of the questions asked was, are kids going to be punished if they go into the six feet space, five feet space? Yes, of course not. If you're a kindergarten, first grade teacher, getting kids on the rug, trying to keep them a half a feet or a foot, two feet apart is hard enough. Keeping them six feet apart, but we're going to help, help work with them on that. It'll be like anything else that's new, you've got to practice it. Okay? There are certain children with disabilities, moving around the classroom is part of their learning experience and we have to work with them. So, but those are the exceptions. We need to continue with the six feet as we planned. Superintendent has to submit, when we go into phase two, with kids coming back to the building, and when we go into phase three, with kids coming back to the building, not if we do it remotely, has to submit a plan on how we're meeting the health requirements. Okay? Phase three, when we go back to the learning face-to-face for groups of children, I forget if it's 15 or 13 days, let's just say 15, 13 seems like a weird number. But 15 business days before our school starts, the plan has to be published on our website. So 15 business days is really more than three weeks, if it's the 15 days. But I know it's, I know it's, see the 13 or 15, I don't know why I'm thinking 13. So that's why, even though August test may seem far, it's not far away. It's far from far away. And then if you back off to three weeks, or 15 days with business days, you're looking at 20 plus days that we have to. And one thing I will at least tell you from the parent advisory group, we get a small group, not a scientific group, but it's an understandable request. Sooner we can know, the better we can plan. Okay? And the, and the planning will have to change based on the circumstances. I'm right now probably just looking at an August plan. Okay? And then reassess it towards the latter part of August. So phase two, again, instruction will be predominantly remote because again, it's normally supposed to be preschool to grade three and certain student populations like children with disabilities and, you know, so on. Six feet separation, restrict mixing of groups of students. We talked a lot about this. You know, sometimes we have children go into different classrooms. Sometimes teachers will regroup children based on their learning needs at that time. We also talked a lot about limiting, that's why I mentioned the art and music work, limiting hallway. You know, schools, if you think about it, depending on their talent, on their schedule, is a big mixing role. You know, kids, you know, just go in and out and then we, we have to limit that. We talk a lot about limiting, and that's why I said earlier, don't look at a starting time and an ending time. If we transport children right now, if you think six feet social distancing, let me tell you what the footnote exception is. I could put children of the same family next to each other because they haven't been socially distancing. So that, we got approval today. But think of it this way, one kid sitting by the window, the seat next to them empty, then a kid sitting in the aisle behind, then a kid sitting by the window, and so on, like that. That kind of is almost the design to get the six feet. So, right now, you know, we have 60 to 70 kids on a bus. What I just described to you is about 10 kids. So we will have children, and this time it may not be accurate, but you get the idea, at 8:20. And we'll have other children at 8:50. And we may have other children at 9:10, 9:20. So we can't think like, you're late, or you started early, but the kid gets there, learning has to start. Okay? And we have to make those adjustments. The office area, we're putting these, like punchy glass, like you see in some of the grocery stores and other places. But we're looking at our practices. Why do, why is the office so crowded in the normal community? Do, if people have to sign in, let's have other locations. Let's stagger the parent drop-off. We anticipate that there will be less children on the school bus in the beginning because people are going to be nervous about that, understandably so. So there'll be more parents then dropping their kids off. And if you have everybody drop-off at the same time and walking in, you're having a hard time with the six feet social distancing. All right, 50 persons, so phase two is 50 persons left. So we went from 10 to 50. Okay, six feet apart, got assemblies graduation, closed communal spaces at possible. So we talked about grab-and-go for lunches. We looked at, we were talking about different ways of offering lunches. Elementary, it might be more realistic to bring food into the classroom. Then in high school, maybe a little bit less realistic, but maybe it's a blend-up. Few of us, a few months ago, went to the RICO County Public Schools. We visited a high school, I might have told you this already. And their cafeteria was the entire school. Kids were able to eat anywhere, they had a one-hour lunch, and they were able to eat anywhere in the building. And that also was a time to say, you know, that they did club activities. So what if we had something like that, but we designated spots six feet apart? We had an X mark, or something like that, this is where you eat. So we're, again, we're just, we're just really in a planning stages now that we know what's there. Although, when you see our documents, we've anticipated pretty much all of this. Okay, this, nothing caught us by surprise today. All right, one of the questions that we, on the parent advisory, is after each bus run, does it affect the buses? Okay, so that's why, when I talk about, we need more money for cleaning supplies and staffing to clean it, that's an example. A limited extracurricular activities and athletics with mitigation strategies, again, six feet apart. So phase three is what we anticipate. I think everyone who opens up August on, instruction will shift to include more in-person instruction for any student. Remote instruction will supplement in-person instruction for students. Childcare and or before and after care schools may be offered. In order to accomplish social distancing, school plans may need to include staggered schedules. And then, we're looking at different staggered schedules for students. Again, six feet apart, the gathering at that time will be, we don't know. New executive order will come out, considering restricting mixing groups, adjusting schedules, transition, recess option, athletic and extracurricular activities may be expanded with mitigation. I think June 15th, the DSHL executive... I think June 15th, the DSHL executive board meets, and at that time, we may learn more about full sports. So, I, I don't have any answer now, except to tell you that they're meeting in a week or so. So, our next step is the elementary principals working with Carrie Nettie, middle schools working with Andy Greger, high schools working with Tom Nichols, thank you. Constantly collaborating with George Hummer and his department, Roxanne and her department, our nursing department, keeping every decision, this is a system, staff and county public school system. So when we make a decision, we can't make it in isolation. One of the things we talked about today, the research, and there's a lot of rationale for this, is to focus more of the face-to-face instruction at elementary. Why, remember, everything has to be different, I just need to say, again, I know you know this, but I just wanna say, and I want the public to hear it a lot too. What if we had elementary kids go to the middle schools? Instruction. Okay? What if we said, as an example, 10th grade, you're going to the middle school? So we could have more kids, but then we have to have staff. Maybe it's such, maybe again, as parents, maybe we teach people to be teachers, whatever. Okay? But we just can't be thinking it's strictly K5 at the elementary schools, it's strictly 6-8 at the middle schools. So where we are is, today, food service was there, transportation was there, nursing was there, planning, the wife was there, all of our principals. And we had a good conversation, I gave direction on what their work has to be. We will convene in about a week, just to get a sense of where we are. Obviously, we meet with the central office instructional leaders and the people I just mentioned twice a week, Monday and Wednesdays, and, you know, we're planning. And then we have to communicate to people and adjust, we gotta be willing to adjust. Because the best plans might seem like great plans on paper, and then the plans may end up, as we execute it, need some adjustment. I also will tell you this at the end, and see if you have any questions. We're also planning for the scenario where a school has a couple positive tests, or one positive test, and how do we respond to that? And what does that mean by, do we shut the school down? Do we keep the other schools going? So it's not as simple as having a plan that says, this is the way we're gonna roll it out. We also need to have stop and goes in our plan, because there's a higher probability of COVID-19 continuing to spread. And when we bring, even if we bring back one-third of the people daily, we'll still be, you know, back a lot of people. So, that's where we are, that's, we're reacting to the governor's plan, but we've been planning for this, for weeks already. So, I, I feel like, you know, we're in a better place than probably many, um, bookish, not yet dare to tell you the next steps.
Okay, I'm gonna just go around, um, Miss Hollar back to your side. Assuming we still have power over our calendar, would it be helpful to get the extra time by pushing the calendars, pushing the start to after Labor Day, so we can prepare a little bit better for this implementation?
I appreciate that question. I will not say after Labor Day, I think that's too far out, concerned at how long the kids have been out of school. I feel like if it's gonna be anything, it may just really just be a couple days, that has been a request by principals in a meeting today, I just asked them to take this out, is there might be a way to do both of what we're trying to do, give staff more professional development and planning, and also, and I'm just using an example, an hour or two getting some children in, let's just say 11 o'clock making up the time, that learning stops the face-to-face, and the, and then from 1 o'clock to 3:30, we have the professional development. I, I will just, so, in the committee reports that I've had a chance to look at, there has been a request to delay the opening of school, not for staff, but for students, let the staff come in when they're supposed to, to provide more training. And I just wanna hear, I just asked them to think that out more, because I am just, again, I, I wanna do it right, I don't wanna do it rushed, but I don't wanna lose sight of the parent survey on the remote, and also, the kids have been out for so long already. So, I may come back, that would be something you would have to do as a board, adjust the schedule if we're having a starting date different. If we're just changing the staff schedule, I could do that, I have that authority in the school board policy. But if we're actually starting the calendar different, that includes staff and everybody, you have to do that.
I have a question with respect to the, the teacher contracts, and I understand we contract by a number of days per year. Is there any hourly reference in those contracts? Because if we're gonna be bringing in a portion of a class at one time, and then another portion at another time, and I, I understand and don't have any issue with learning starts when the students get there, there's gonna be some reputation. And if, if we are gonna have equitable teaching for these students, and the ones that come in later are going to need more instruction when the first group is, is released. So anyway you look at it, unless we're going to reduce the amount of instruction overall per student per day, there's going to be a, a need for more time on the part of the teachers.
Yeah, I, I really feel like we're gonna be reducing enough the instructional there, I really do. I don't see any way around it. I think we may continue with the essential skills, like the English and math, but we may be reducing some of the other things, because transportation is gonna need enough time. And once we start having people work beyond certain hours, they have to be compensated. And we are also gonna have to consider those students that are not in the buildings, that there has to be some remote learning planning, and that is gonna be, I believe, I don't know this as a fact, but we'll learn more next Friday, over, after we give out the parent survey, there might be some families, you're reading this, I don't, I haven't seen any evidence for Stafford, but I don't know why Stafford would be different, where some families are gonna wanna keep their kid home for a while. Okay? And there might be some adults. Now, we are working with our staff, there are some laws, and you have some school board policies that address those staff members that have health considerations, that was another set of laws, and then we do have, you have policies, and so one policy, and I'm not saying, I'm, you did wave your policies, and, and I'm not saying this is a policy we're waving, but I just wanna give you an example of a policy I might be telling you over. May, middle of May, or sometime in May, maybe Chris knows the exact date, somebody could submit a leave of absence for a year. Okay? And you don't get paid, but we are under that, and then we come back, the next year we have a position that you're qualified to, to teach, you come back. If we get people that don't have the health factors to not be at work, but they're still very anxious, or whatever, they, they may be taking care of, they're all family members, whatever, I don't wanna conclude that they're anxious, but they, they just don't wanna come back. But they want to come back at a later time, then we may work with, for them to submit a leave of absence for a year. But because the make date is already passed, we don't wanna be inflexible as to do that. That's something that Patrick has taught me about, and I said, if, if we see that, so Patrick actually sent an email out to staff, if you think you're gonna be that person, of course he didn't word it like that, sooner you can let us know the better, so we can work with you. And then of course, you know, my balance is, of course, to try to really be very sensitive, which I'm going to be, and care, and caring about staff, and also make sure that our students' needs are met. Okay? So, I will say, well, I got a question that you might be asking, which goes a little bit to Irene's question. We do have a concern if we wait much later to get staff back in, based on how our contract is designed and our calendar is designed for the upcoming year. Because, again, Chris is there, he could articulate it a lot better than I can. If people come back, even if they came back a few days after August 10th, although you know that the staff come back the week before, they come back August 3rd, and the new staff come a week before that. But the later we would require them to come back, the concern only is if somebody starts working for us and then leaves, because they would get a paycheck and maybe not a lot of days. And then we would have to go, hopefully it would be something that we could be mutually resolved without an issue, but it could be a situation where we would have to go get their money back. And Chris is another way of explaining, or a better way, I'm sure there's a better way.
Just, high level week, typically, an individual employee works, and then we pay them, and depending on, just so that we can keep their pay schedule consistent with the current year, if they came back too late, we wouldn't wanna adjust their current schedule. So they'd actually be getting paid some date where they actually worked. So if they left during, by the time they worked their entire contract, it works out that they only paid their number of days, but if they leave mid-year or retire mid-year, then we have to adjust their pay mid-year, and in some cases, they've then overpaid the number of days they've worked, so we'd have to get money back from them at the time they leave.
One thing I also would, you know, again, just give you some suggestions, the high school probably will have greater success with remote learning than the young one. And, and so, that, we may have a situation where certain teachers are gonna be in professional development, and other teachers are gonna be spending more time with direct instruction of children. If we get to a situation, I know there are a couple schools talking about, I haven't heard, seen any, planning to have a plan that's been presented to the public yet, but I know there's conversations happening in certain school systems about Saturday school, about evening school. Again, unless they're providing a flexible schedule for their staff, and I don't know, because I just heard conversations, someone's given the details, that would obviously have an additional cost. And I, again, I don't wanna harp on the money, but money is a driving factor in the planning is, you know, again, Arlington, I'm just giving you examples, 40 miles north of us, about 1,000 less kids than us, $5 million more, who cares that? Okay? So, we have to work within our budget, or work towards to getting, you know, additional support. Again, I just, I know you have the same feeling, right? I just know that there are children that are going to be further behind, it's what they want to capture them up, and, and I, and I think, I don't wanna speak to staff, my gut tells me that many of our staff, if not most of our staff, would like to get back to this learning, uh, more. But it still will be very small groups of kids, and transportation, that's the big equity issue. There are some families where driving your kid to school, I could do it, I got flex in my work schedule, I got flex in my transportation, I know, others, no, they're gonna have to get on a bus. I, I felt what Barry said, either 12,000, 14,000 kids we transport, that's not a small number. So even if half of them choose not to come, which I know that would be a surprising number, could be true, that's still a lot of kids, and if it's only 10 kids on a bus, you know, that's a lot of trips compared to 60, 70 kids that we have on a bus.
Right, I'm gonna move on to Dr. Warner. I also want more to consider whether, as we move forward, that we would like a work session or something else, because I think there are thousands of questions, even after just getting this information. So I just would like more to consider that, not to cut off the bit, but just saying, we may, once we start hearing from parents, once this information gets out, we may be not hearted. So, anyway, Dr. Warner, I'm sorry, I wanted to do some things.
I just have a couple of questions. I just have a couple of questions. Do you have any idea how many teachers are really uncomfortable, we had to get back? Are we going to have staffing problems if, when we do try to move into a phase real big?
Ask the question while I'm talking.
Are we going to have staffing problems when we move into a phase real big, some of these teachers are uncomfortable, kind of get to work and risk getting exposure?
Right now, I would say, there's no indicator to say that. Okay? But we will need to survey our staff as we get closer to that, to get a sense, and so the staff survey is, is due today. So one of the questions, we'll be learn people's comfort level, based on the survey we gave out last week, and I think it was close today. So, I can answer that question better, you know, next week.
And then the other question I have is, is looking at alternatives about scheduling schedules, especially for high school. You know, it would seem like evening classes for some of our high school students might be perfectly legitimate alternative, which would allow for smaller classes if we could get them staffed. And, and then I was wondering if we can use more of a roving, a rolling end date, so that we can accommodate a certain number of days of instruction and not be fixed to a definite end of school date.
Yeah, so my answer is we could do a lot of it. We have, we talked today about, if we're not gonna be having gym, and we're not gonna use the cafeteria, I'm not saying anything's perfect, I'm just saying, then could the stages be used as a classroom? Okay? I'm, we just have to, you know, if the goal is to get more kids in, but we must maintain the six-feet social distancing. And I also said, look at your rooms. So today, I came here, that shelf was gone. I noticed it. I got a chair, I need to have a little, thank you. Okay? Some of the rooms, and this is where Ramo's gonna help them, they, they have so much stuff in there that's going to restrict their six-feet social distancing based on how it's designed today. And so we need to look at, the library, we're not supposed to share materials and resources, instruments, paper products, things of that nature. So, could the library be used as a classroom? The, the issue again, is as you expand classrooms, so one of the thinking has to be, maybe, you don't get assigned to a teacher as much as you can get assigned to a grade. Okay? And teachers are rotating, and remotely, instead of Mrs. Smith being the one that I'm waiting for instruction, you'll get it from a third or a seventh grade or whatever teacher in that area. And I, and I guess I'm just saying respectfully, and that's why I think, as people talk to you, people's paradigm is pretty much gonna be first, how it used to be. And then they're gonna talk about the remote experience, but when we return, it's gonna be a lot different. Right? And, so I don't know.
Dr. Chase? Yeah. So, glad that there's been a fair bit of work, I'm a little worried about whether you all are gonna get all the work done. I think Miss Hollarback makes a good point, although I'm, I'm not a huge fan of pushing back too far, because I'm worried about the potential fall or winter resurgence of this virus. And so there may be an advantage to getting started in August, getting more instruction in, or more, we may have to shut down more, and we don't know, right, just so many unknowns. One thing, if you decide to delay the opening by a couple of days, could you add in fall break, or add in, take away some of those holidays that are in the fall in order to make up for that pushback? Just something to think about.
Could I just touch upon that real quick? Again, the makeup would only because we feel the need, it won't be a statement prior.
Got it.
Okay? So, the 990 hours, don't even think of that, but it's been very clearly communicated to the superintendent, based on the governor's action, waivers of everything that is time sensitive is going away.
And then, just, you know, making sure that, that Chris and his department is keeping track of the money, keeping this. I'm, you know, the idea that we're gonna stagger kids into the classroom versus maybe doing a week on, a week off, or a day on, a day off, I'm, I'm just worried about the cost. So, that's, that's, let's definitely keep an eye on the bottom line.
Ms. Young?
Yeah. So, I'll talk about the record, because some of this information that you're talking about now, I've mentioned a couple of them, a couple of months ago, so I'll just reiterate some of the ones that I'm thinking about again. I am not for sports, because I'm thinking that we need the space for instruction, you know, gym, anywhere. And, you know, kids could run outside, I, I know parents don't send me any emails, but kids, when they get home, they can run outside. I'm, I'm for masking, and I understand- And I understand that when you mentioned that they want to keep the class together, all the kids except for siblings, there's a reason for that. So that when something breaks out, they would know which kids are in that classroom that they need to tag. But there was a report just last, this past, it could have been yesterday, yeah, it was yesterday, that stated that five, it was like 5 million more individuals would have died if they didn't do social distancing and mask. And you mentioned that the minimum is a six feet. So we could add masks, except waivers for those individuals that has asthma. Why aren't we stopping short of just the minimum? Why not go that level and get that level of comfort to some of the parents that are wanting the other students to have masks on? That's one. For follow-up phase three, I know you're working on phase two because we're in phase two right now, right?
On phase two, but when we return, we'll be phase two.
Okay, but COVID numbers went up. So I don't know, we're going to get to phase three right this minute? And if fall comes, maybe, you know, we may have some, some numbers going down because of the summer. But it may go back up because of all this, you know, protests going on. It's been, you know, just nice, warm and buzzing around each other. So do we have a follow-up plan to ensure that if there's an extension, like everybody mentioned, you know, we're saying the same thing, that probably a work session just to get, flush out some of that information? And then, one of the things I wanted to see is that, I know we talked about summer program for the unserved kids. And I still want to make sure that these individuals have the opportunity to catch up. And so if we could think about that and make sure that we're addressing those needs. And then, lastly, I know you talked about the online resource. I don't know what the status is with that, but this person, if we get them early, should be involved in this task. Because if these individuals here have not worked online before, where are you getting your guidance that this is going to work? And so that.
Your point in that person is not.
I'm sorry?
Your point in that person is not.
Oh, okay, sure, great. Because I was.
I'll answer that after you do it.
Okay, because I was thinking about that strategic plan to provide the results, to answer the questions of those parents that you put up there. You know, to make sure that we have those things answered, thank you.
This will put the under mask. The mask situation will be better defined as we get closer to August 10. The other committee that I just want you to know is that Colette is our key person on the Rattahannock Health District with the four other school systems. So we are obviously taking great guidance from what our local health department is saying, based on the local health data, to go to your point. Okay, so there's state, national state, and then there's a local review.
Thank you.
I also would like to ask for a work session in the next week or so because I just feel like since we weren't part of this as a group, that it's kind of, there's a lot of questions I still have. I do have a high school kid in this and there's some things that, you know, I have very concerned regarding him. But then also I'm hearing a lot of people not want, parents not wanting masks because they want their kids to go back and have some sort of abnormality in their education when they're back with their teachers and their friends. But I would like to ask, when we do, if we're considering doing remote learning again, will we be doing the high school back on education? Is that even part of any of the plan?
Well, it's not just that you knew it, it's other platforms too. And this will be a big part of our remote learning experience. Again, what I was just asked aboard, and I know, I've been trying to keep informed as much as possible, okay? I'm sharing things early with you, then I would maybe, I should have, but I felt like I had to, I did. I would just ask you respectfully, and I understand you have a lot of questions and people are going to have a lot of different thoughts, as you already shared about the mask, okay? And we have 30,000 kids, we've got 50,000 plus parents, there's going to be a lot of thoughts. I would just ask you to, I want to answer all your questions, but sometimes we may not have the answer mobile and we have to be willing to say thank you. So then I had a question asked in my parent's advice I never thought of. What are you going to do about chorus? So I didn't know what, where would that go? Because kids singing, it could be spreading.
Anytime.
Okay, so that would, okay, so, you know, this would be, we're going to, but I just cannot want you to feel good that we have so many people that have been studying the issues. And the plan that we would make forward, you know, obviously we would think is the best for the school system under the circumstances. But you need to know, slightly more session really, but you need to be able to ask every question, but you have to be comfortable at times for me to say, just like you would have to say to your public, we don't know yet, okay? Because sometimes that is going to be the answer, okay?
So, and one last thing is that you were talking about not knowing yet until your survey results come out. But just from a scenario standpoint, if you have, like she was suggesting, that maybe a staff member not comfortable with coming back, whether it's their health issue, family health issue, or what have you, do they get to teach from home? Or do they take, I mean, you've been referring to the fact that they will be given a leave option possibly? But are we, I mean, I've heard it said out there that they can teach from home? And I'm just wondering, how is that?
It could be. I mean, again, you could have a cadre of staff that, based on the information we have, that they will be the remote learning. That goes back to the point I said earlier, don't be thinking that you have a teacher. You have a teacher who's qualified, a specific teacher. You have a teacher qualified to teach that subject or that grade level. And that would be an example, where that would lend itself because if the teacher X doesn't feel like they can come in for whatever reason, but we don't have the kids in our class that need to be remote learning or it's going to be, as somebody described, like I think I shared with this already, although it's over now, they're done. But in my daughter Israel, it was one week on and one week off. But the week in which they were off, they did not have remote learning. Okay, they had, they had half a kids for one week. And then the following week, they had the other half. But that group that was in school for the other half, you understand, they weren't remote learning. So.
Dr. Kissinger, you talked about the groups that you're working with, and again, thank you for all of them. When will they be presenting to you their reports? What is your timeline on that?
The timeline, and Rebecca's listening, you know, I'm just asking her. I'm hoping to have a very good final draft by this Friday.
Hearing that and knowing it could be still in draft, is there a thought for the board that maybe next Tuesday? I'm sorry to pick Tuesday, but that just seems like a night, possibly to look at our calendars, to be able to at least look at that, have you talked to us about it? Because there's been a lot of great work done too. I think we also want to do that, just as a work session, just for people to talk because I think there are lots of questions. So I just throw that out to the board if that's not, but.
Did you say next Tuesday? If it's possible to do next Monday, and I don't want to get into great details, but I'm going to be having a medical thing and I know I can't do Tuesday, okay? So, or Wednesday, but I could do it Monday.
Is there a preference you would want to make? You know, I'm trying to give as much time, so I don't know if there's preferences for a Wednesday versus a, I can, or we can have.
Okay. And the Wednesday. We want it Tuesday. I'm fine with Monday. And just not pushing anything bad, but if something goes awry with whatever his medical procedure is, I'd rather do it before, if he needs extra time to recuperate. I don't want, I don't want to push this.
So we don't make it.
No, Monday will all be fine. I'm not making guarantees for Tuesday.
Why don't we tentatively say that, and I will work with Ms. Aller to at least announce that meeting so that it is publicly noticed if there is, what time?
I work, I work.
What would be, is there a preference for earlier versus later? I'm just trying to.
I mean, are you traveling up and down the road that we need?
Yeah, but I've heard this, I can, I'll just.
So we want to say 5:30, 6 o'clock? Is that one of those times?
I can even do 5:30.
5:30, let's go earlier?
And if I end up working from home on that day.
Okay.
So we can even do it, okay? Correct, so.
Correct, that would be a remote one, that's it.
So why don't we put 5:30 on our calendars at this point? How about we try that?
Yeah.
My just closing comment on this is, I have a concern in two ways. And this is just more of our comment, we'll name, is how are we going to be tracking? So much of our state money is based on ADM. And I have major concerns with some of these proposals for parents of whether they may homeschool or choose to make that. How we will be able to track how early parents may be making those decisions?
So I'm glad you brought that up. If I could just quickly address that, and I love that the admission show off because I don't know what you had in your back there, but I was having a hard time hearing this admission. So an example of why we have to be flexible is exactly what you just said. ADM will not be counted like they have in the past. We'll have greater flexibility. What we have to demonstrate is that we are connected with the trial. And so one of the remote things that I could assure you right now will take place is attendance and grades. Okay, there'll be a higher level of accountability for the students, which means greater accountability for the adults also. So, so anyway, I mentioned that is because what I, and we haven't seen any, we haven't seen this trend at all, I think maybe one family, people asking to go and homeschool. Okay, so, but we need to be prepared to recognize that they could just be parents. And I understand, I mean, you know, all of us have kids, I'm looking around. There's no one here that doesn't have kids, okay? So I can understand as a parent, you're nervous, okay? I was nervous again, those 50 people in there, I felt like if we could bond, like I'm totally people come here, if something happens, I'm owning this thing, okay? So, so I just want us to recognize that and be able to work with those families, understanding that they're not going to get six hours of instruction on a teacher on the other side of a screen working. But, so ADM is going to be like they did this year. The ADM stopped on March 12 and they start and they ended there. So Dr. Lane, again, the general assembly and the governor immediately gave him full authority to make these adjustments as long as there's a state emergency. And in essence, you guys have done that, maybe you didn't really need to, although I haven't had to do anything yet. When you waive your policies for now, and the only thing you asked me, which is absolutely fair, is to let you know, I haven't waived anything. But if I was going to waive anything, the one that we're looking at possibly waiving is that one related to the May date to extend it to give people. But right now, we haven't had to do anything. And truthfully, it's because the state is waiving some of the stuff that they took the wave away from us.
Okay, like I said, what I would encourage for men, we always get a lot of information, you know, come up with your list of questions and additional things as we get towards Monday because part of, part of making sure that our public is informed is that we are informed as well. So anyway, we'll help for everybody. Moving on, we will not be having citizen comments here this evening. Next will be our governance committee report, which will be this weekend.
Okay. For the governance committee, we basically had, I would like to say that we finalized our code of conduct for employees. I really appreciate the, and as a new board member, I have to say, you think that something's going to come up, you're just going to like wing through it and you'll be, and nope, there's lots of different layers. And I really appreciate Dr. Kissinger and his team with Jennifer Parrish, Lisa Boatright, Patrick, Burnett, Jacob, and many other helpful staff, as well as my helpful committee members for the back and forth of things and patience, so that we do have. Second was our board retreat, which we're still trying to nail down. And so hopefully in the next couple of days, we may still be able to salvage the 20th in the afternoon, our person. When I called him after I got the times, he had just finished booking his vacation. So, but I think I have an option B, and so stay tuned.
All right, then we move on to the board member comments. Ms. Aller, I'm just going to start that way and move around.
That's fine. I was going to speak a little bit about our graduates. But I think, I think what I'm going to do is put something on social media because we've got a lot of things to cover here tonight. So I'll pass it on to Ms. Lee.
I'm going to pass this tonight in the interest of the economy at times, but a long agenda and a political issue.
Dr. Warner. I have things I would like to say, but I think in this time, I also would like to defer to the later meetings that we can try to do through today's agenda and. Close session.
Dr. Chase. I actually do have some comments. And they're related to some of the events that were taking place. And I wanted to say that if you think that we have some problems related to race in Stafford County public schools. When I ran for the school board in 2017, I spoke to quite a few voters in my district. And some told me they thought discipline was harsher for black students than white students. I heard about a bus driver who would discipline black students for being on their cell phones but say nothing to white students. Funny thing, my son rode on that bus and when I asked him about it, he said yes, it was absolutely true. We have data that shows that black students are being suspended and expelled at much higher rates than their white counterparts at all grade levels. In 2019, while redistricting for elementary schools, we received emails from parents who didn't want their children attending school with, quote, "those children." At least one resident sent an email using derogatory language to describe my colleague Ms. Young, the only school board member singled out this way, and the only school board member of a racial minority. Last week, I attended a youth forum at United Faith Ministries to hear concerns, experiences, and recommendations from local youth related to Stafford County. And I want to thank Vernon Green and my fellow board member Pamela Young for providing me with this opportunity. What did I learn? Some students are afraid of school resource officers. They want to hide or run away so they aren't injured or killed by the police officer. Some told stories of the offensive language that was directed at them by other students. They were upset by students who dressed up as slaves with cotton in their hair or dressed up as Hitler. Black female students felt that the dress code was applied more stringently for them than for their white peers. Students thought some presentations and sporting events were racist. They saw Confederate flags on the vehicles of some students when they walked through the school parking lot. Students in accelerated programs like IB and CGS feel that teachers don't think they belong there and don't call on them when they're in class. Students wish there were more teachers who would like them. Students want minorities to be represented fairly in the curriculum, not just pulled out for black history month. And they don't want to be told that the Civil War was only about minorities. One student served on the principal's minority council at her school. While she was glad there was a council, they'd rarely met and there was no opportunity to have a dialogue with white students. So clearly, there is work to be done. I have been trying to gather my thoughts. I recently had a question about Stafford County and ended up on the Stafford County Wikipedia page. And I want to share something I read. Stafford County is a suburban county and home to many Washington DC commuters and workers who work for the federal government. It is also home to many military families due to its proximity to Marine Corps Base Quantico. These facts contribute to the high income of families in Stafford County and the high amount of homeownership and college graduates. Stafford County is also one of the few counties in America where black households make more than white households. Some people like to say that our issues with race are entirely because of income. But clearly, there is more to it than that, at least in Stafford County. Everyone working in Stafford County public schools is paid with taxes collected from Stafford residents. Many of those residents are black. We are employees of the taxpayer. We are employees of the taxpayer, and based on what I heard, we are failing to provide an appropriate return on their investment. We need to do better. To principals, teachers, bus drivers, school resource officers, central office staff, my fellow board members, and Dr. Kizner, when we look at a student, any student, I want us to remember that their parents and grandparents are paying all of our salaries. We work for them, they don't work for us. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Um, and so, I don't know how to follow that. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
So I attended, um, on May the sixteenth, I attended a Hampton Oaks graduation celebration. And on May the nineteenth, I met, uh, some hungry, um, families in the community of Onville Road in Garrisonville. And, uh, yes, I'm sure, um, everyone knows I attended several Black Lives, uh, marches. Some of you are still wondering what the fuss is about. Uh, you may be unaware of what Black Lives Matter is all about. We are not saying that every life does not matter. We know every life matters. But what we're trying to say is that blacks are tired of white vigilante and police officers of all colors hunting and lynching our sons and daughters and with no regard for their lives. Remember, it was not long ago that Emmett Till was killed, he was fourteen. But Tamir Rice was recently killed, and he was also fourteen. So you only hear about those that, you know, you know about, that make it on the news. There's what is called systemic racism in this country, and especially in southern states. But you do see, when you see a Confederate flag, you see history. African Americans see slavery. There is a systemic racism, bias, microaggression hidden in the curriculum by some teachers. I know some of you are comfortable and don't want any changes, but this system has to change. So the school system needs to complete the cultural sensitivity training that was started pre-COVID, after the implementation of restorative justice. I need to see results or way of mindset change. Dr. Kizner, who does not shy away from hard work, and tasking him to train the entire school system and provide a timeline of completion. Changes in the police department, I hear people asking to defund the police. Listen to yourselves. You don't defund a police department, because when you call nine one one, who is going to come? What we need to do is, there needs to be additional departments to assist the police department. Because when you're having a fight at home and you're, you're, there, there's some aggression going on, yes, the police should be there. But if you're having marriage, marital problems, you need a marriage counselor, you don't need a police officer. If a child is mentally, is mentally challenged, you don't need a police officer, you need mental health support. So when you call a police officer to your home and your child is mentally, you know, have mental challenges, and that person is black, that is, the cop has a license to shoot to kill. If that child is white, they may make it to the hospital. Our children don't make it to the hospital. So that's a difference there. So, they, the police supposed to keep us safe. So we should be able to see statistics of, in our school, school system, how many students have been challenged by the police officers? And that's one of the things we're going to look at and talk about is the MOU. But I would love to see numbers from the police department as to how many kids were taken out of our system and for crime, and I looked at the MOU and one of the languages is that they could decide, um, you know, what is considered a crime, problem solving to prevent crime. So they could decide what crime is, and so is crime walking while black? Um, I will take a few minutes because I had more. Um, but I wanted to, a, a letter came in my mailbox. Um, and Dr. Kizner and I, we've been helping some of these students. There was a, if you don't think it exists, there was an eight, uh, a middle school child that was going to commit suicide, and the mother called me for help. And, um, the mother is, she is a, a microbiologist. Her husband is an FBI parent agent. So these are not folks that don't know math. But, um, luckily for us, the child lived, child survived, and we were able to help this child out. Um, what I didn't know is that, as, this past weekend, I told the child's mother just to write me a letter so I could read to you all, this happened this semester. And I will omit the name of the teacher and the child. Before the nineteen twenty school year started, my family received an email from Mrs., not welcoming our child to her class, but to state that she thought the class would be too hard for our child, and we should switch her class to a lower, less advanced class. This was before meeting my daughter. My husband and I set up a meeting with the teacher and counselor, which we were belittled by the teacher, and when corrected, her response was that usually kids don't have parents who could afford to get their children tutors or support if needed. We quickly responded that we have always supported and made sure, no matter what price, we would make all sacrifices for each of our children if needed. This teacher then bragged on her failure rate of students. My response was that I believe that a failure record doesn't show of great leadership. It showed opposite, because I've always looked to those skilled enough to get through to all students and get them to pass, um, as a sign of achievement. Before the first nine weeks was over, our daughter came home and let us know that at any time she asked the teacher a question or to expand on any problems, the teacher's response was always that she should know that already. She didn't want to help, she didn't want to teach her. She also proceeded that after the first nine weeks, she wanted to have another meeting in order to remove her from the class, at which time we stated that she wasn't getting what she needed in her class. We would find a tutor to aid our child. The teacher's response was to then send her students, um, watermark documents that stated none of her test preparation document is to be shown or used at any private tutoring institutions. She continued to not take and never give any positive guidance, instructions, and purely refused to teach my child. Every day, our child would come home crying, mentally beaten, and I had to get my child to therapists. Prior to COVID nineteen, our plans were to find a way to meet with everyone in order to discuss plans, to resolve the issues, because we couldn't change teachers with the understanding that was only the teacher to, for this particular course, and I'm not going to tell you what that course is. During COVID nineteen quarantine, we were able to secure a tutor, and, um, I will skip some of the wording, but the bottom line is that, um, they received an email from the teacher asking in so many words if their daughter cheated. Then after her response that, um, she knows that her daughter doesn't teach, the teacher's response was that she couldn't have possibly known the answers of how to arrive at the answers because it hadn't been taught yet. So, I want us to make this right, and I am asking Dr. Kizner to help me to make this right with this family, and then this child especially, and this son. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Um, I would just like to quickly say congratulations. I saw that we tweeted out today that, uh, Pam Kill is retired. Um, and I wish her well and hope she has a happy retirement. Um, I really appreciate the words from Pam and from Sarah, but also in the essence of time, I'm going to pass on my card.
Um, I, I'm not going to take much time. I do, one, just want to say I thank the board for at least looking at the BSBA model. Um, it is something that the board, um, would like to look at, to have a strong statement, um, but I do believe it needs to be ours. Um, so it, I, a template is always nice to start with, but I hope that is something maybe we could, um, continue in our work session, I'm not trying to pile on, but I do believe this is that important, that I really would like our voice heard, that may be an additional work session type of, of item. Um, and I just would like to, um, just quote, uh, a, a quote that actually came from Dr. Kizner. He used it in a, um, presentation, you may not even remember what it was, but it talked about, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." And I just hope that we, as a board, will work together and we work with our community, our faith communities, our school communities, and all the other communities that we all touch to work together, because, um, I used to say, um, consistent pressure constantly applied is always, we, we can't be a single, single action. When we say we're going to work together, it's not for the one week, it's not for a cycle, it needs to be continuous. So I'm just, um, I'll just say that this evening. And, um, with that, thank you all very much for your comments. Um, I believe many of us are hearing lots of things, and I think that's something we all want to, um, reflect and share and see how we can be part of, again, also, you know, um.
Dr. Dr. Kizner, back to you.
So I'm just going to say something brief, and then I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about finance. When you hired me twenty months ago, I made a commitment that I was going to have an unwavering belief followed by action that every child counts. I'm not going to apologize for that. And I've been touched by stories that I hear at different meetings, but probably not, I probably has not, I probably have not been touched more than an experience last year when a math teacher and an eighth grade teacher, a math specialist and an eighth grade teacher, asked me to meet with a class of black males to share their experience in our school system. And I'm just going to say, if it was your child, you would not be happy at Stafford County schools. And I am not going to apologize for being vocal, because I would do it for your child, I would do it for your child, and I would do it for my children. And that's how I feel. And that's why you hired me, to be the voice of a lot of kids that don't have a voice. And I think if I stepped on people's toes, I would just ask them to reflect. Reflect on our actions as leaders. Those thirty thousand kids count on us. I never ever said I want one kid to get something over another kid. But I surely don't want other ki, a kid not to get something because of their color, their race, their religion, their sexual orientation, you know how I feel about it. Okay? So, but systemically, it's more than just speeches. What you heard, what we heard, all three of us were at that, I heard it again on Sunday night, we do need to look at our curriculum. How relevant is it to people different than my three daughters? What is our book selection? What are the expectations of our staff? What is the understanding of our staff? And I guess, I'm asking you as school board, and I know that we are a team, I love what you just read to Polly about doing it together, that it's more than just looking at the school resource officer, it's more than just looking at who's in the gifted program, it's more than just looking at who's being suspended, so we have to really look at our school system A to Z. And just ask the question, is, it's a very simple question, is it fair to everyone? And if we come to the conclusion it's not, then we all need to pause and say, how do we make that happen? It's not a criticism, but you did hire me with this understanding, I did not hide my beliefs during interviews. I did not. And, and so, I know that some people on Sunday, what I said bothered them. But I would ask you if what I said was inaccurate. And if it was inaccurate, that I will correct. But it wasn't inaccurate. But if it was, and you could tell me it was, I'll be glad to correct it publicly. But I stand here for every child and every staff member. And that's what I say respectfully to the board. Before I turn it over to Chris, I, I could have done this under COVID nineteen, but somebody mentioned, a couple of people mentioned graduation. Unfortunately, I did have to inform the students today, based on the governor's decision. You know, it's great to have somebody to blame, because everybody could blame me, I could blame the governor. That we are unable, because the fifty, there's no sign that that number fifty will turn to a thousand by August. We surely don't want to make kids and families have to wait anymore. So anticipating this, the principals have been meeting with, um, Dr. Nichols, Tom, and planning. And one advantage I think we have that maybe people didn't have a couple of days ago is that we could notch up these ten day, ten person graduations to have more, so invite more family members and more people that are meaningful to that child and be with some peers. So, so tomorrow afternoon, all five high school principals will send, uh, uh, information to their students to give them clarity on what we will do for graduation, which actually will start the following week. It's not a one day event. You know, we got, you know, we got a lot of kids, we, you know, about twenty-five hundred kids are going to be graduating. So we still have to do in small groups, but it's not going to be virtual, we're not just going to do a film. We, we may have a film for them as an add-on so they could have more memory. So I just want to let you know that. So there are some things that I do want, um, to you to be aware of, because the board supervisors is seeking some information, which is fine, you know, as our partnership, but I felt like you need to know, um, uh, anyway, Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. I wanted to provide the board with a brief update on our FY twenty situation. So normally by now, we are, um, starting to kind of define itself on what it's going to look like at the end of the year. Um, at least with revenues, unlike most years, there is still uncertainty on, on the revenue side, um, specifically sales tax and our lottery revenue from the state. So I'm going to touch on each of those and a quick overview of our expenditures as well. And as Dr. Kiz, Kizner's mentioned on several occasions, um, what I'm stating now could change tomorrow, and we are projecting revenues. And we're a little conservative in some areas, and so I just wanted to state that first, that, that, you know, it's all okay right now, I want to, I want you to think that we're, um, we're not in the red, we're, we have a positive fund balance projected, we have a positive fund balance, but that's assuming that all of our state revenues do meet the projections that we're, that I'm going to talk about briefly tonight. So on sales tax, we have information on our March sales tax payment, which, as you all are aware, March sales tax, or the pandemic hit about midway through March, our sales tax payments are always two months lag. So we are currently, um, probably next week going to get our April sales tax, um, information. Uh, and that's part of the reason why normally by June thirtieth, we have a better idea of what revenues are, because we know we're going to hit our state numbers, but with the county, or sorry, the state kind of warning us, hey, you better watch your sales tax projections, we're not, um, expecting to hit all of them. We're going to probably be into the July and August before we really have certainty on what our state revenue is looking like. So, um, coming back to sales tax, we, the March actually was over our prior year sales tax numbers, so it wasn't increased, but it was under our projections. So overall, we were projecting, um, increases over the prior year of about ten to twelve percent, and March came in about five percent. So really waiting on April to see what April looks like, that'll be a big indicator of what the rest of the year will look like, and as things are opening back up. And we haven't seen that huge drop off, a lot of that is due to the internet sales taxes that are being collected currently at the state level and distributed to the schools. So overall, for sales tax, we're projecting to be short approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, but as I mentioned, we have to get better projections after we have our April, and obviously May and June, but April will give us a better indication for the rest of the year. Shifting to lottery, uh, the state notified us, um, around May twenty, May twenty-fifth, that they would be suspending our lottery supplemental per pupil for the rest of the year. And we had about one point three million dollars remaining. Doesn't mean we're not going to receive any of that one point three. They are suspending it and then are going to review it at the end of the year once they've collected all of the fiscal year through June thirtieth lottery payments. So we could see another payment, but as of right now, we're projecting is that we are not going to receive any more lottery funding, and therefore going to be one point three million dollars short in our lottery state revenue. There are some other miscellaneous revenues that total up to about half a million, point six, six hundred thousand, that will be short. That will be short. Those ones we're pretty definite on because it's not as much as the state. We know that we're not collecting it and because operations have ceased. A lot of those also have expenditures tied to them. So as we save money on the expenditure side, we're actually losing some money on the revenue side. But I have to mention that those local revenues are decreasing because I'll tell you about some of the expenditure savings and those offset each other. Overall, the expenditure savings right now are approximately $3 million in savings. So if you do the quick math there, we're still in the positive. We're looking, but that $3 million can grow roughly, maybe even as high as $4 million. One of the areas we're still seeing savings in, but once again, there's also a lag here is our health insurance. So as health insurance has been suspended during the governor's first quarters of the last couple of months, some of those optional non-emergency surgeries and other appointments were delayed. So a lot of those appointments have gotten pushed out of March, April, May. Some of them are starting to pick up now. But because of the time period that it takes for medical claims to go through the doctor's offices and the anthem, and then we get billed, we are projecting to see a decrease there, but we won't have definitive numbers probably until later. We won't have definitive numbers. A lot of better ideas we get later in this month. So overall, projecting a positive fund balance. One thing I want to remind you of is we made built FY '21 budget. We budgeted for a carryover of $1 million. So the target that we're trying at minimum to hit is that $1 million of positive fund balance. And right now, we're hovering in that half a million, 1.5, all depending on how our state revenues shake up. Any questions? I'm trying to keep it brief, but try to do a good update.
Any questions, members?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. This is a call, Chris.
All right, our next item is our consent items. Is there a motion? Move to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any removals from the consent agenda? No. Hearing none. All those in favor of all five items on consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next is our first action item.
This has, I just mentioned.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Dr. Kizner has a few words.
Yeah, just very quick. So you made some really good appointments just now. Barbara Platt is going to be assistant director of student services. Christine Onidi, O-N-I-D-I, she's a math specialist at Hampton Oaks. She's going to be the assistant principal at Windy Creek Elementary School. Amanda Drazio, who's a teacher at Rockland Run. She's going to be assistant principal at Rising Star, early childhood. Benjamin Diggs, who's from this building, ITR this building. He's going to be assistant principal at Stafford High School. Schwab Reed Elliott, who's a math teacher at Colonial Forge High School. He's going to be assistant principal at Stafford High School. Monica Van Dusen, who's an ITRT at Colonial Forge, will be the division ITRT. And under lot, and Matthew Cook, who's a consultant at community, will be our new online system designer in technology services. So I think we've got some good people.
Adam Scher, if I might. If we were in chambers right now, we would be giving all those folks a round of applause. So. Sorry. So moving on to our first action item are the approval of the 2021 high school fees. Is there a motion? We can certainly have discussion. Move to approve the 2020, 2021 high school fees. That's accurate. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
Just a quick question. We had a discussion last time, and I raised a question about the JRTC. Were you able to get some information on why that fee is $100? Is it the largest fee on this list?
Yeah, well, I didn't get the answer the way you were asking the question. I did have Tom with the principals, and they felt that fee was, this is not answering the question, I'll be the first one to say it, but they thought that fee was very reasonable. And let me get you the answer. I'll email you why they felt it's that. They looked at all the fees and felt the fees met the objectives that they're trying to accomplish.
If I could, Jimmy, last time it was my recollection that when it was first approved at $100 is because we were getting sweat suits for the students, and that was something that they would be able to keep. But since the last meeting, I've been advised that the only thing they can keep is socks and a t-shirt. And the rest of it gets handed back in. So I would like to get some information on why that is $100. It just seems out of line with all the other fees. And maybe because it's one of the last fees we implemented. But if we're going to be equitable about imposing fees, then I would like to have that information. And I do appreciate the explanation on this fee list about how waivers can be requested, you know, if there is a financial hardship within the family. So thank you for adding that.
The only reason I'm turning my phone on is sometimes people who are listening, they will text me the answers. So I'm not going to lose that to Chase. I am just using this as a way to communicate.
Are there any other questions or concerns? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of 9.01, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next action item is regarding adoption of textbooks. Is there a motion? Motion to approve? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this particular item? Ms. Healy?
I think Dr. Chase, in her comments, mentioned a point that was made about textbooks not perhaps be reflective of equality. And I don't mean to paraphrase, but is that something that has been considered in the recommendation of these textbooks? Have we looked at that? I know we have multicultural committees and you have advisory staffs. So I would expect that that is something that has been considered. But given the environment and the questions that are being raised, I would like to have confirmation of that before I approve adoption of textbooks that is going to be used throughout our school and that will be in place for a number of years because of the expenditure for them.
So the answer would be, I'm sure it's considered, but not at the level it needs to be considered. I will tell you that because of COVID-19, we did not get to report. I think you're aware that we had an outside group at the Department of Ed Pay to do an equity audit. I asked Roxanne to try to get that out of Texas. They spent a few days with us, and they're going to talk somewhat about this. Charleston City Public Schools, the school board policy is something you may want to consider down the road. All their decisions have an equity, what's the word I'm looking for? Equity template that has to be looked at, so every decision. And I don't want to say that they don't consider it because I do believe it, but not to the depth in which I am talking about. This is where we have to do things systemically and get it done right. And not, it's not going to be changed overnight to do it right. You've got to get enough reviewers and outside reviewers to look at the relevancy of these books. You know, the example that Dr. Chase mentioned is what I hear so often. We're teaching history in a history that's not relevant to a lot, any kid. Doesn't matter, you know, you can pick your kid. It's, we're not talking about things that are so important to them. You know, we're stuck. This is somewhat on the state level, but we could change some of that. We could adapt it. We could talk about what's happening today and compare it to, you pick your timeframe, okay? That's the curriculum rewrite we have to do. Why do they need the textbooks copied now? Those are so you know, so we can order them and get these books ready. Because remember, there's the book part, and then there's the technology part that comes from the same provision.
Well, Dr. Kizner, under the circumstances, because we're talking about spending $3 million for books that were going to be in place and used for seven years, are you recommending that we go forward and vote to adopt this?
So remember, adoption doesn't necessarily say we have to buy them, okay? You're saying if we are buying books, these would be the books. I will definitely go back tomorrow and ask the group is, are any of these books need another, are these books meeting the equity concerns that people have been raised? And get you a better answer. I'm not involved with that process, so I just don't want to dismiss the work of the committees that have been meeting. Can we, is this the last, no, this is the second.
No.
No, we have another meeting, Jill. Is this the second time? I don't know, we worked on the purchase orders, right?
Yeah, this time was slated to go for action, and I know it was kind of pushed as late as possible.
Yeah.
It's kind of up against the.
I think again, you know, obviously last time. It's a process, not an event. I think we move forward on this and we get better the next time, okay?
But we're stuck for seven years with these books. I mean, that's what we're buying them for, seven years. Is this something if we could have a special meeting on Monday and just to address this agenda item, would that be helpful? Because if there's a book on here that there's any question about, I would prefer not to purchase or not to authorize the purchase of a book.
Like I tell you, the books they have now is not the books. You know, we got to get, the sentiment is the books we have now serve the purpose, but now we got to get additional books. So we're not going to be in a position to prepare to have a new recommendation in time for the kids to return. You know, again, it's one of the, this is the only real downside I see of having a meeting like this because I would have Jan and those people in the audience, and I would have them come up. So again, Monday is not going to be a, you know, it's not going to be a time killer. So if the board feels more comfortable, you want some answers on Monday, we'll do it on Monday.
Dr. Chase, I think I need to hear you next, so.
So I just wanted to, I would thank Ms. Healy for bringing this up. But I also wanted to say that, mention again, that I am very impressed with some of what's going on at some schools. So Gale Middle School having the book that they read across the entire, the entire school where the book involved students from, involved characters from diverse backgrounds. So lots of students could see themselves in the book. And I felt that was really great, and I'd like to see more of that. And as you said, it isn't just the textbook, but we can address curriculum in other ways as well. So just.
I thank you for being there, only because I do want you to know there's a lot of good things we are doing. It's just not going to happen overnight. We've made good progress. I can only speak for 20 months. We've made good progress in 20 months. It's slow, but it's intentional. And so anyway, I appreciate you recognizing that.
Ms. Healy?
Yes, I do like the fact that we're working on that. One of the questions I had was, do we have someone internal that are looking at the book itself? Like what's written in the books? Because when we talked about systemic changes, and you know what? I'm going to start making you all a little bit uncomfortable with some of the things I'm going to say. I understand that. But when we talk about systemic racism, some of the books and the information in the books, I don't know if anybody's looking at what and why it's written in a way. So if we're going to buy based on what Ms. Healy said, books for seven years, we need to just make sure that they're good for all, the cultural sense of the books.
It's up to the chair. Ms. Stripe, Dr. Stripe is on our, on our thing. She could actually somehow show up and answer some of these questions if people would like. It's up to you guys. She just texted me, she wanted to answer us all.
Before Ms. Strike, or any other question, because she may have a capability to answer. I wanted to.
I appreciate Dr. Healy's question. Like, you know, what are the problems with textbooks that they have created systematically for years? Been sanitized, and many are inadequate. But I think teachers often supplement those textbooks with curriculum that is more on point and helps students really identify with history that's more applicable to their life. But this has been an ongoing thing for decades because most of our textbooks are written for the state of Texas. And we don't have a lot of choices. So I can understand the time constraints of trying to make a decision about this. And I'm fairly certain that the textbooks that we're probably authorizing, doesn't even necessarily going to purchase every one of them, but they're probably better than the textbooks we have. And I think that this is an ongoing thing that we're going to have.
Do you feel a little bit more comfortable after you get Jan's answer? Because she gave you the answer. But I think they read it to you, or she could be on your mic.
I just want to say something before we go into that because I haven't had a chance to speak on this yet. I agree with Mrs. Healy because this is a seven-year commitment. And the things that Dr. Chase has brought up, when the committee was looking at those books, those things were not taken into consideration.
No, it was, that's what I'm saying. If you let her speak, she'll tell you what was considered. I mean.
Can you finish your statement, though? I want to. Thank you. I just want to make sure that they're scrubbed because we're all going to take a vote on this. And if there's anything that comes up in those books, every one of us in here is going to get called out on it, except for you.
Well, I'll get called on it, but I'd rather you guys get called on it. But I'm just saying that this is really, to me, a great conversation because last year when we adopted books, we didn't even think, we didn't even talk about this. So I'm just saying thank you. But I'm also saying Jan's here, or I could read the text here. I'd rather you hear it from her.
And can I just say, the person that you should thank is that student who came to that youth forum and made that observation, that shared what was going on. Dr. Strike, would you like to respond and be loud?
Can you hear me? I'm at the first that heard that. Am I too loud? Am I good? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So when are teachers, as you know, there are multiple committees? If you're not aware, we have all been working on culturally proficient and diversity in everything we're doing with curriculum instruction. Really, we began, we began three years ago with this. So there is a rubric in our textbook adoption that considers diversity as a measure in the rubric. And I wanted to comment specifically, although I don't have a report on every single book because the list is quite long, you can imagine. But for example, our Hooton, Rithman, Park Court, our resources for the very large elementary English are culturally relevant and ethnically diverse text, very specifically written and designed that, and it's designed to build cross-disciplinary knowledge. So your textbook publishers are certainly reflecting a lot of what, in fact, we have actually demanded as a society of educators from the publishers. If you want a report by Monday on as many books as we can specifically that were part of this very large adoption, we can certainly delay till Monday. But I have to say that we've never had a textbook approval in my four years here that's been this late. So it's going to be difficult, you can imagine with the delays, to get them in time if we go much further than that. And I'm yield for comment.
If I could just make an overall comment, I would just invite the board to look at the, I do believe that probably the sports medicine, athletic training, trade and industry, I'm sort of looking at some of the books that I have a feeling may not have some of those. For me, it's going to be English and it's going to be history. So from my perspective, I'm not saying, you know, I could be convinced, but I would not want Dr. Strike and her team, should the board decide to go to Monday. For me, I don't need an analysis of sports medicine, athlete. I think it's more focused, if I'm, think I'm hearing the board, on the English. There's no history on this one. That's why I was trying to say, to me, when we bring those history books, I think that the board may want to know early on about that particular book adoption, or at least this board member would.
Adam Scher, would it also be acceptable to include in the background information that the staff has considered the things that we have discussed here about ethnic and racial sensitivities and acknowledgements, that they've taken all these things into consideration when they chose these books?
And perhaps if we wanted to split this motion tonight and vote for this, I'm going to say sports onward, if anybody's following on there.
Yeah.
And then perhaps, Dr. Strike, what you have just stated for us could be part of the item for those English ones on Monday night. I'm just trying to come up with a way of it.
Um, so the fact that I heard Dr. Right, did I say that correctly in the last? Sorry. But we've been in conversations forever. This is not prior to you having a board. So I trust. So I trust that she took my heat and that she's doing what she needs to do, what that's concerned. Because she's been working on this for a while and I've been over it. So if she's telling me that they've been taking that into consideration and somebody's looking at this book, I'm not going to hold it up for purchase.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'm willing to vote on this this evening based on this additional information. But I agree with Ms. Hollerbeck and Ms. Young. I would like to have Dr. Strike's explanation made part of the minutes for this meeting. Because I think that's, I think that's important. And what I was asking for, Dr. Kizner, was your recommendation. And I appreciate you deferring to Dr. Strike because she's hands-on on it. But my concern is that if we're going to start doing something, it needs to start now. And with an expenditure like this and a commitment for books that are going to be in place, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for, for the schools and the students. So if you're comfortable with us moving forward, you know, in terms of a recommendation to approve these books and based on Dr. Strike's explanation, I'm, you know, I will, I would long to support the motion this evening.
Thank you. I would encourage you to do that. And we can still get your information, but just to move this forward.
And I think just making sure that we have Dr. Strike's comments again. And then, Dr. Strike, not for tonight, but perhaps you could share with the board in, you know, I know next year that seems, when the history books are up for their rotation, that would be helpful. And I believe Dr. Warner had also asked for the rubric. I'm going to say, am I going to say it wrong?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see the rubric.
I will make sure that I get the rubric to all of you. And of course, the rubric's used with all the textbook adoptions.
I appreciate that. All right, hearing, all right, all those in favor of 9.02, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our next item on the agenda, having spoken with many of you all, what I thought I would do is I would call out where it seemed like people's interests were for our standing committees. I'm going to sort of call what I heard. We can certainly talk more about it, but as opposed to everybody nominating and such, I hope you all will give me the ability to sort of start with where I believe that we might be. For the Finance and Budget Standing Committee, I have Dr. Warner, Ms. Healy and Ms. Hollerbeck. And I am willing to consider on as an alternate, should I be needed, but I wasn't before. With the Joint Schools Committee, I have myself, Dr. Chase, Ms. Young with an alternate of Ms. Randall. I have for Governance, Ms. Randall, Dr. Warner and myself. And Legislative, I have Ms. Young. I am willing to continue in a support role, but I have made it clear it's not going to be. Is there anyone else who would have an interest in serving on the Legislative Committee this year?
Does everybody have a committee?
Everybody has a committee, so. I think at least one of their top choices. Ms. Young, we can, we can plow along if we want. I can stay on it, but I can't guarantee that I can be at every one of them because I have a senior this year.
Yay.
And I want to be that for him, so. But if he would be willing, for the, at least for the time being, and we may be doing remote meetings.
Maybe we need two alternates.
Sure. Do two alternates, I think that would be an option.
Okay.
So I'm putting Dr. Ed as an alternate. Is everyone comfortable with that slate? And I can give this to Missy. I don't know if there could be a motion to approve the slate as presented or how. Motion to approve appointments of school board members to stand in committees as presented by Chairwoman, oh, not Hazard.
Those are not the advisory ones.
That's going to be second. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. So I would just say to new members on committees, reach out to all. We may, we may be able to have a joint meeting. However, I do believe some of our committees may want to begin our work soon, as we go forward. All right, our next agenda item is appointment of school board members to serve on the advisory committees. This one is the one I may or may not have correct, so please jump on. I'm going to go first with the primary contact for the advisory committees. For capital improvement, I have Ms. Randall, Career and Technical Education, Ms. Young. Fine and Performing Arts, myself, Gifted, Ms. Young. School Health, Ms. Healy. Special Education, Dr. Chase. And Technology, Dr. Warner. Are those acceptable as primary?
Whoever wants to take one away from me, that's fine. I'm happy to give one away. Not all at once.
Anybody jumping up?
What do you have?
She has Gifted and CTE.
And then I also have Joint and Legislative.
I will take CTE. I'll take CTE. Ms. Randall.
Want to take CTE?
Sure.
All right, so I'm going to substitute or have Ms. Randall on CTE. With regard to our alternates, let's just go through the same list. Capital Improvement, anyone find to be an alternate there?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. For CTE, now that it's Ms. Randall, is there an alternate? I'm happy to continue as alternate. Thank you. Fine and Performing Arts, we have a lot of fun. If anybody'd like to be an alternate and you do not have to sing.
As long as I don't have to sing.
Okay.
I don't like that.
I don't want to do that. I don't want to take any chances on that one either. I hate that.
Six feet of air.
And you can do that. Gifted, we have, anyone would like to serve as the alternate on the Gifted Committee? All right. Leave that one vacant, but if anybody jumps up, Ms. Young, recruit.
Ms. Hollerbeck, I'd say if you don't have an official alternate, if the primary could try to secure one for whatever meeting, because it's only when the primary can't go, that would work as well. So you can call me.
Oh, she's the alternate.
Not officially, open an asterisk.
School Health, Ms. Healy, Dr. Warner, would you like to remain as an alternate for that committee?
Yeah.
Dr. Chase, no, sorry. Ms. Hollerbeck, are you interested in staying as an alternate for Special Education?
Good enough.
All right. Technology, we have Ms. Young as the alternate. Would you like to stay in that role or would somebody like to jump on that list? Okay. All right. So a motion to approve the appointments of school board members to serve on the board's advisory committees for FYE 21, as stated by Chairwoman Hazard.
Right.
Right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome aboard to your committees. We will of course be trying to figure out how those can meet with COVID. We may be able to utilize and, I'm sorry, Dr., because you haven't even talked about this, but with Mr. Cook and others, we may have to facilitate and allow those kinds of meetings through the school technology platform. And there's a reason I'm not on the technology committee.
Am I to understand then that none of those committees as they stood this year will have an ending report? Is that correct?
That is correct. So I believe and I will work with Ms. Hall that we may reach out to the current members of those committees with a certain type of letter. We can coordinate with our communication staff of encouraging them to come back, of course, and saying, well, just things may look different.
Because they've already probably started a body, started a body of work that they may want to.
So I'd like to try and get those out publicly in July. But that was sort of my thinking was to reach out.
One sec, did anybody else have those connections? Are people still watching us because I think we just got disconnected?
Mine says live.
It's just me then.
Very young.
The public doesn't recognize you here.
All right. Our next are information items and we have some, I know we have some staff, I believe, that are online for us to ask questions. Dr. Kizer, is it easier to direct it to you and then you to kind of call the staff? I want you, I figure we'll figure out how to do that best. All right, our first one is for the school board chair to sign the annual BHSL. Should there be something, membership and insurance applications? I don't think that's, any questions there?
Is this required whether we participate in, or are we to wait until a certain date? Or I'm just curious as to, will that number change or is this just flat fee?
As I had read it, it appeared to be that it was a flat fee.
Regardless of what we do.
Regardless of what we do. But Dr. Kizer, you and Mr. Palmer, if you have a reason that you think we defer this, we can discuss that for the next, based on whatever happens on June 15th in BHSL. If this is still.
Ms. Hazard, this is Mike Justice, I could, I could answer that question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Justice.
All right, so the membership application fee has three parts to it. It's the flat fee that pays for the membership for each school to be a member of the BHSL. And then there's a smaller fee of $35 per activity that each school had or held last year. And then the insurance for the catastrophic insurance coverage for each athlete that participated. So and as of last year's numbers. So membership fee for next year and then the actual activities that we held last year and the number of students we had participate last year is, is what brings that total amount together. Now, as you can see, or maybe you haven't taken the time to delve into all 30-some activities that are offered. But since we did not have spring sports this year, the BHSL did make an adjustment and we were not charged for any of the athletes that were on the original eligibility lists or for those activities. So if something does not pan out, that we do not hold, BHSL cancels, like we did this spring, that, that fee next year would be adjusted. Does that answer that question?
Yep.
Sure. Thank you very much. That was the clarification I think we were looking for.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to 10.0.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
I'm sorry.
But while we have Mr. Justice, I noticed that all the schools, but one has 22 sponsored activities and one has 21. Is there a reason that everything is not offered at all of the schools?
So when I was going through there, it looked like one school did not have the film festival, the HSL Film Festival activity. And either that was driven by a lack of student interest or possibly not a staff member willing to sponsor that activity. So those are usually the two reasons. So that one activity at that one school and that's what I, now I could follow up as to why that one school did not have that activity and report back to Mr. Nichols and, and Dr. Kizner to pass that on to you, but that's, and it, it has fluctuated by one or two in the past.
Just looking at it, it looks like two of them don't have the film festival. And I understand if you need a staff sponsor, but, but we are trying to be equitable across the schools.
No, I'm looking at.
No, I'm looking at the thing.
I'm just kidding.
And if we have offerings at three or four of our schools, why not have them in all five, particularly in a BHSL sport or, or I'll call it sport, BHSL sponsored activity, whether it's fine arts or, or athletics? So I think that's something that we need to look at this year to make sure that we have equal opportunity at all of the schools for all of these offerings.
Certainly, I am more than willing to follow up on those two.
All right. Film festival schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. All right, moving on to the agreement to continue the school division's participation in the Outlaw Regional Migrant Education Program, if everyone has read that.
Yeah.
It's a consortium that assists us there. But if there are any questions?
Still one kid off.
All right, seeing no questions. Moving on to our funding for the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is 10.03. Are there any questions, specific questions about this particular agenda item? There may be, I understand, so. Am I seeing any questions at this time? I'm just curious, how many of these schools are, I guess this is, this is free and reduced lunch percentages that we're seeing, is that right? Not just free?
Yes, this is Roxanna McCarthy. Yes, it is free and reduced lunch percentages that qualify a school for Title I funds.
Right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have a question, is this where the school, this is going to change, is there a year?
No, this is, this is why I want not, not come to the special.
Okay.
All right, any questions right now? All right, let's see, moving on to 10.04. This is regarding the purchase of up to 9,000 Chromebooks for our elementary, middle and high school students in an amount not to exceed $2.1 million using budgeted funds and funds provided by the Board of Supervisors. I believe this is on their upcoming agenda. I just want to say I appreciate the members of the Board of Supervisors who reached out to offer to do this. So it's much appreciated.
Madam Chair, I would also like to recognize that it was the Board of Supervisors that came forward to us first with this offering. And that, you know, I know you referenced Dr. Kizner a fight, but I know that they're just trying to afford these Chromebooks. But I think that it was, I would like to recognize that it was an offering from them first and that the details of it are still being looked at. But I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, our next item, oh, I'm sorry, any other questions? The next one is about a month-to-month extension, extension of the contract with Rico USA. It's about the copiers. I'm using the copy just very much.
I'm just saying, like, that has to be serviced.
They have to be serviced. Exactly. Yeah, they always need to be serviced, no matter what.
Well, I know, but a lot of copying to get families.
All right, seeing no other questions. Next one would be a construction contract to replace the chillers at North Stafford High School. Are there any questions about this item?
These are for the air conditioning system or the chillers in the kitchen?
Air conditioning.
Can they make them any quieter?
See, this is getting old.
Actually, I'm impressed they lasted this long. If you look at these dates, this was back in the 19, I heard the hundreds. They're big things to purchase. I mean, we're, we're fortunate because some of our other schools don't last nearly that long.
Yeah. We're actually, so we have two chillers at North Stafford. One of them is actually down right now. So we're trying to get estimate what it's going to cost to get it screwed until we can replace it this winter.
All right. As you can see on this one, this is a pending appropriation of funds from the Board of Supervisors. I would just encourage everyone, this is a, seems to be a needy project. And I want to thank Mr. Palmer for explaining to me how the new system works regarding those funds that they are held. But it is for these types of projects. And having gone through recent, or no, old 3R projects, this one's been on there for a while. So, all right, 10.07. This is about revisions to Policy and Regulation 2401. This also includes exhibits related to cell, cellular phone and electronic wireless devices at the middle school and high school respectively. So I just wanted to make sure we were covering all of those. And I just wanted to note for, for anybody watching, the, the big change with respect to cellular phones is to remove the idea that you use your cellphone during class for any purpose. And that, I think the new thought is that most classrooms have some kind of Chromebook option and that we no longer are asking. some kind of Chromebook option and that we no longer are asking students to use their cellphones during class.
Well, isn't the idea after this Chromebook purchase that we will be one-to-one so that, is that correct, will we're done?
Yeah, I mean, just, I'm glad everybody's recognized it, Board of Supervisors, though they haven't voted on it.
Right.
Yeah, but if they do that, then we'll be one-to-one.
Right, but, but I do wanna, having been on the technology committee and things like that, that, that one-to-one will only last for five to six years and then we have to replace them. So it's not a, um, and just like buses where we try not to buy a huge number of buses at one time because of that expense, um, this is rather a large number all at once, not that I don't want them, but, but, um, it, it means we need to be thinking about how, if we, if we choose to maintain one-for-one, how that happens.
Right, right. And then, and also, I mean, a policy, I mean, there's so many things in technology that change anyways, this part of a policy may need to be updated, changed or whatever by then as well, so. But I do like the fact that it does take down the necessity or the excuse of a cellphone for, uh, when you have now a device that will be at your disposal.
Yeah, and I'm, I just, I'm glad you guys are saying one-on-one because the model changes, these kids will have full possession of these Chromebooks, where now the model has been, you get Chromebooks off a cart pretty much. So now these Chromebooks, so that would even support more why you would not need a cellphone in the class.
Um, are there any questions for, um, Mrs. Boatright, who is probably on here? I'm sorry, I can't check my, um, thing. Are there any comments, Mrs. Boatright, that you have with regard to this? It appears the board has, um, reviewed this, but I also wanna give you, because I know a lot of work has gone into this, if there's any comment you have on this one, I believe twenty-four oh one for the, um, cellular phone use.
No, I don't have any comments. I received, uh, good feedback from some of the board members, um, with regards to making some tweaks, uh, to the exhibits, uh, with the cellphones, but I've spoken to, um, each of you, so if you don't have any questions, I'm good.
Okay, I just always wanna give the, the opportunity since this is, yes, Ms. Young.
Lisa, it may not be the right time, but my condolences to you and your family.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, Ms. Chair. Um, I, I just have a, a comment. Every year we have our student assemblies and obviously we're not gonna be able to have that this year and I wanna make sure that these changes in policies are communicated, particularly at the high school level, as the middle school as well, but these are clearly communicated to the students because the, this is set up to be signed by the parent. I'm assuming if a student is over the age of eighteen, it's a student who would be, would be signing this, but I don't want to hear, I didn't know that was a change because there's some pretty, you know, significant consequences here and if we're not gonna be able to enforce that across the board, then that, that's not gonna be fair. So, you know, I would, I would like some kind of a plan in place to make sure that each student is aware of these changes.
And just so you know, you're stupid here for some kids I didn't know, you know, um, but the plan will be, will be communicated multiple ways, electronically will be the key way, um, but your, your point again is well taken, I just, yeah.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Sure, Ms. Young.
Um, and I'm not sure if this is where you were going with it, but, um, I just thought of it, that, um, since it's gonna be, um, something that they're gonna be taking home, um, do we have the policy in place where this is for homework in school because, you know, you wanna download all these apps and, you know, who's gonna support it when, um, it messes up? So that, that's something that we need to think about because, ah, you know, they're taking it home, um, they have to do their homework, they can't sign on, who do they call? Is there like, is there gonna be like an eight hundred number or five four number that they're called technical help? Because I know for myself, you know, there's help that's twenty-four hours for me. Um, will there be something that these, uh, students will be able to, um, get hold of someone and hopefully Jay's not answering every single question?
For the Chromebook?
Yeah.
Well, again, there's help lines, but I'm not gonna suggest if you call at nine o'clock at night, there's gonna be.
She's asking though, will the school be support, supplying support?
The school has central office.
Like, like she's saying, if they're home doing their homework on their Chromebook and they're having a struggle, I'm understanding, and who would they call with that struggle at, I mean, they're going, they're not doing homework, it's at nine o'clock at night.
You know, you got it.
Thanks, but nine o'clock at night, they're doing homework, who do they call? That's what she's asking.
Um, well.
She's.
You don't have to answer that, but just, just think about that. And then, uh, the other part is if they're downloading items that they're not supposed to, we, we need to have something in place that they know what to download unless we could block it, right? That it be just specific things because you're not gonna be able to operate all these individuals out there. I know Board of Supervisors, I'm, I'm thankful for them, but it would be nice if we should get some technical help, eight hundred number, um, for, you know, all of these, uh, thank you, because that's all part of COVID, so that's COVID money that we could like, let it, let it streak downhill.
This may not answer your question, but I just want you to know something that we actually may already have on, it's not very soon. We've made videos for parents that are online that they could help navigate. It doesn't answer your question, it just breaks down.
Yeah.
Why do I do it? But it, those help.
Yeah, because it became, um, they can look at that.
We got that feedback from you guys a couple months ago.
So, in other words, speaking similarly to what Ms. Healy is talking about with this whole new code of conduct, you know, I, I know like when my kids go to college, there are certain modules that they have to complete before they get there and they still knows if they've completed these modules before they get there. And so, you know, maybe there's a parent module, a student module, or a family module or something that, you know, conveys, what would be even more fabulous is if we had kids doing this because you have so many amazing kids doing filming.
Yeah, and again, I'm just, I'm having a little hard time following the questions because I think I'm getting different questions to different topics. I just didn't wanna say at nine o'clock at night, if you're doing your homework.
Yeah.
That there's somebody waiting for you for questions. I'm not committing my staff to that.
No.
But I do think your point is well taken, if it's nine at night, I hope at eight-thirty in the morning, if I had that same concern, I have somebody I could reach, uh, I could out, you know, reach out to. So, and then the other part, um, uh, yeah, it's gonna be communicated, but it's gonna, you know, in two thousand and twenty, we gotta be thinking often less paper copies and more online documents, like we do board docs. So, um, soon as you approve it, we are prepared to communicate, to get it out, that'll be part of my Friday letter and then start collecting. What parents sign is that they received it, they don't necessarily have to agree with it, but they received it. And, um, but unfortunately, as you know, you've been in this business a long time, that still doesn't prevent, just like when you may get pulled over for something, I didn't know, you know, I didn't know, um, so, anyway, but.
And, and just part of that policy, I mean, if, if, I don't know that, you know, the computer was left at the beach, do they just get a replacement or that, 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 you know, there needs to be some accountability.
Well, is there any way we can set it on line where they have to, it goes through a, a training module, take a quiz at the end, pass the quiz and then when they come in, they'll give them their Chromebook. That way they know what the rules are.
Oh, don't take that quiz, that go, I don't know.
So is this, okay, so, so actually, it's not, it's not a, so we've been talking to Governor's Committee about the policy that, you know, you may act on is to have staff review it. So if you're going for your teaching license right now, you have to do a, a module online on dyslexia, A D, C P R, and you have to, before you get your license, you have to demonstrate that you can pass it. And so what you're really saying, and all you're saying is, makes perfect sense. I'm, I'm not gonna tell you we're there yet, but, um, I mentioned this at the Governor's Committee because the policy on, on the staff code of conduct is not going to apply just to the new staff and we hire staff all year long. And I just used the number five, so within five days of hiring, you're going to complete, um, this module and it's, it's information plus you take a pretty simple true and false type of thing, so.
This is new, this is a code conduct that.
I, I know, but do the staff, the HR staff, sorry, but do they get to do whatever they do when they come in, you know, like if they do a diversity class, whatever, do they do it every year or just once?
Well, again, now, what are we speaking about for this license or?
Anything, when they people come in new, is it just one time or is it yearly that they need to?
No, so, it, it, it's, it's neither one or, it's definitely one time.
Okay.
And then depending on what we're offering it again, um, or an expansion update could participate, okay? But right now, we don't really have anything for our new staff except, I, I was raising a concern that when new staff come back in July, I don't think it's a really great way to welcome them to go over all these policies, if you wanna kill the buzz of starting in a new place, but to have this module that you have, and anybody getting a teaching license the last few years is completely familiar with it because you have to go to the D O E website and complete these modules. And so the question on the technology or even the student code of conduct, I mean, we think this out a little bit more and at least the high school kids, maybe they, we could set some time for them to go over some of the questions.
I just think that this way you've got an electronic signature that they fragile in, they had to complete it and you've got a, an electronic record that said they did. So, so you can inform them of these rules and regulations related to both the technology and the student code of conduct, whatever those people, especially for high school students because if, if any of them's gonna be downloading some games that might not be appropriate or might damage or might have viral software on them.
And I do think there's some value throughout the year for the principal and the staff to go over some of the rules again, as, especially the ones where they see more issues developing, more violations of certain incidents, to just stop a little bit and let's, let's talk about these rules that, that.
Yeah.
As a system.
You don't want to talk about it because of the, you know, you know, computer, yeah. Okay. Keep going.
All right, moving on, oh, sorry, any more?
No, no.
Okay, moving on to ten point oh eight, which is gonna be policy twenty-one oh seven, which is about alternative education programs, twenty-four oh six, student absences and, um, dismissals, and policy twenty-four oh nine, teacher removal of students from class and twenty-four twelve, symbolic expression, appearance, dress and gesture. There's a lot of those there. Are there any, and I'm just gonna do them by number, I just think it's easier. Are there any questions regarding, uh, twenty-one oh seven, which regards the, um, assignment to alternative education program? All right, I have one just comment and I will say that, um, Ms. Boatright, uh, in our discussion did, um, ease my mind on this. When I first sort of read this, when it talked about this authorized to require, I did talk to her about that, some, some of us have served on discipline committees where we made the very, um, rare decision to not recommend, um, an assignment to the, um, alternative education. I think all of us want to make sure that we have an S O R or Protection Officer of some type down there and I just wanted to make sure that that was preserved for the superintendent and for the board because there may be sometimes circumstances that it is not appropriate weighing this, the, our staff, is that, if, I think Dr., Ms. Boatright spoke for Dr. Kizner, but, you know, it's an extreme case, but I wanted to make sure that that was, so, and if, and she assured me that it was. I just wanted, when I first read it, when it said require, I thought there was no exceptions. All right, um, twenty-four oh six regarding student absences, um, questions there? All right, twenty-four oh nine, teacher removal of students from class. Questions, comments? All right, excellent. Then regulation twenty-four twelve, symbolic expression, appearance, dress or gesture. We have a question there. So, uh, Ms. Boatright, does this policy, um, prevent students from, from say wearing the Confederate flag into class?
This policy explicitly does not, um, address Confederate symbols or flags or things of, uh, that nature, um, but, but it does talk about, um, things that may cause a disruption in school, which is kind of that First Amendment jurisprudence, but, uh, this, this does not explicitly, um, say that Confederate symbols cannot be worn.
Okay. It's something that the board may or may not want to, to consider and, and similarly, I think what I heard from, from students was more concerned about, you know, walking through the parking lot and seeing things on cars and, and I don't know, I defer to, to the lawyers on the board, um, but we, having a parking spot in our schools is a privilege, it's not a right and so, um, I wonder if we could have some kind of policy related to that and it may, I, I, I understand about concerns about free speech and things like that, but it's just a question, um, about perhaps, you know, you could have it on your car, but then you can't park at this school, but I don't know, just a thought. I, I would like to, um, challenge this, this, this issue here. Prince William County just passed it where they, there is no Confederate flags allowed to be worn at all. The Marine Corps of the United States banned Confederate flags, Confederate tattoos, Confederate everything, so are we, are we gonna, are they gonna sue everybody? I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, we had this big discussion tonight about, we're gonna make a change and we're gonna make it right now, why, why aren't we making that change? Let's add it. Is the. Gotta challenge us. Is the will of the board, Ms. Boatright, would you be willing to, um, examine the, um, um, policies, like I said, Ms. Palavec has, uh, referenced Marine Corps maybe even Prince William, um, would you be willing to look into some of that language, which to bring back as, um, at least as an alternative or to add to this policy? Um, if there are some challenges that you have, please discuss with us, but, um, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Kizner.
I'm just asking you that question. I apologize.
I told Lisa, but I see.
Okay. Looking at Dr. Kizner too, I forgot, Lisa, is that something you would, um, or, I agree with Ms. Palavec, but we should just ban it.
Parking spot is ours.
Let me just say, because I love the enthusiasm, I just feel like I have an obligation to, to ask us, just let us research it quickly instead of, and, and just get, get you, you know, let's look at the Prince William.
And we're not.
Let's, let's talk together for parents, let's just, you know, I'm not saying, that's not the way we wanna do, I just don't, you know, I, you know.
It's coming back. But it's a good ask because it is coming back, so.
Yeah, so, so we hear you loud and clear and by, uh, next meeting.
And we will include vehicles.
Yeah, I think it's your, on your property.
Yeah.
Can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Healy.
Um, I do believe that we do not permit Confederate flag clothing in our school and it has been addressed under the, the provision that says you cannot wear something that's going to be disruptive and, and perhaps now's the time to come out and say it, but I don't want to give the impression that someone can wear a Confederate flag this way because I don't, I do not think this was the case. I recall years back, it did occur and it was addressed and that was how it was addressed. So maybe we want to address it in a more direct fashion, but it is not something that to my knowledge is allowed in schools. And as long as we're looking at that, we should perhaps look at some other eight symbols so that are offensive to, um, groups and many, many people. I just have one other comment here and, again, it, it comes from general sensitivity to different, um, cultures or, 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 um, lenses, as Dr. Chase would tell me. We end this with a paragraph that starts out, it is the expectation of S C P S that students dress for success. I would success, we take that out because there may be a different expectation of dressing for success.
Totally agree.
From, you know, di- different viewpoints, so we don't need that in here and I, I, I think it would be better to exclude it at this point. And I, I think it would be better to exclude it at this point.
Is there?
I would, I would agree. Good call.
Agreed.
I think that's such a great point, thank you.
And understanding it can be broader than the particular flag, it can be other symbols.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I, I believe that was clear, but I'm always trying to make sure. All right, our next one is, let's see, approval of ten point oh nine, approval of proposed revisions to twenty one oh six, exclusion of students and policy twenty four oh three regarding suspensions and expulsions. I will ask first if there are any specific questions around policy twenty one, twenty one oh six, sorry, I'm trying to catch up with my, I know, I saw a paper, sorry.
Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm just going to go a little off topic here, but I would like to, to make sure that it's on the record that Stafford County Schools has looked very differently at discipline since Dr. Kizner's been here. That this past year is a, a very good example. I mean, how many discipline committees did we have for infractions that would be over six, six days or more that were actually appealed to the board? So there is action that has been taking place in our schools, definitely over the, the just past school year, notwithstanding the fact that we, we ended early. So I think this is, this is putting it, you know, putting it, the changes in writing, but there, but there are changes in our school district and we are making progress here. And I, I would, I would like to, you know, have the school district get some credit for having made progress before it appears that it is being, you know, just, just a quick response.
That we're reactionary?
Yes. That's, thank you.
Right, any questions on this one? Next policy, same agenda item, twenty four oh three regarding student suspensions and expulsions. Are there any questions or comments regarding this?
Um, we, I did want to just add that, was it last year? We had, had a meeting where you all presented to us the, the discipline data and the information about enrollment and gifted programs and things like that. And, and we've been working on, on training the trainer kind of thing. And I was hoping somewhere in here that we'd have a follow-up of, of, a follow-up meeting where we would get more information. It doesn't have to be, you know, immediately or anything. But, but as, as Ms. Healy notes, we have been trying to make some changes and it would be nice to see what those changes are yielding in terms of results.
Yeah, and, and thank you, anticipate that that might be a request. Folks are working on that and, you know, maybe July-ish or August, we could, we could present, just factoring in, you know, that we were three months less of. Percentages may not matter, but the, the end might, might change when we look at discipline things.
Aren't we supposed to have them report next meeting about the security report? About that was scheduled, we talked about that.
Yeah, so we would need to go, uh, well, let me, I think we would probably need to do a closed session for that.
Okay.
Yeah, but let me double check, I kind of feel like we've, the transportation we don't, but the security.
Security.
Yeah.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Dr. Chase said and I thought maybe I did, I wasn't clear when I did task you earlier in my, in my speech that we wanted to know what those numbers were about, you know, after the train to trainer and those discipline numbers. But, you know, piggybacking off of what Ms. Healy said, this is not, you know, gut reaction for the board because even though we did, it was a seven to zero votes when we did vote as a school board, we did, did pass where, you know, we have a department that has, you know, it, it's not a committee. It's a department within Stafford County that is, has equity and diversity. And so with a director, so we're doing well there. And, and hopefully we do a little bit more because, you know, Roxanna is doing great work. And, you know, I think it's, it's a phenomenon that we've done this much work in, in such a short period. In addition to that, not only do we have that, but restorative justice, like I said, but we just need to move a little bit more. And the things that we're doing is, is something that we just need to continue to do. But what I would like to see is not like a tug where we have to fight to get these things done. It should be an agenda, once we put it on there, we all will live in the same direction versus, you know, having a four-three vote or having this slide it, you know, in an agenda. I would like to freely speak on these things and, and hopefully get some buy-in.
First of all, I want to thank all of you, but I do want to acknowledge Lisa Boatright, that's somewhere in that bubble because she handles a lot of the discipline appeals and things. And I've seen her with parents. I've seen her with parents who are upset and kids who are upset and how she's able to get to a point where everybody understands. So these things don't happen by accident, they happen by design. And part of the design was put the person in that position. And Lisa, I hope, hopefully you still are, so I'm giving you a thumbs up because you're doing a great job.
I'm still on, thank you.
Are there any final questions about either of these? My, my comment just regarding this is not as, as much on what's contained in here. It's just that things have changed and it's how we're going to be communicating this information to parents. And I know Ms. Young has talked about, especially in the discipline area, the, the communication that goes to the parents, this may be an area that we really may want to look into interpreter, not just interpreters, and maybe not just Spanish. We may just need to pre, and I hate to say the boilerplate, but you know, of the, of the times and stuff. Maybe we may need to, and like I said, that's for, for Dr. Kizner and his staff to say, but I'm thinking in this particular area, I may feel more, we might need to have certain number based on our, our population, so something just to think about.
You did remind me of something that goes back to your earlier question. We've been operating a hotline since, since March in six or seven different languages. It's not, you don't get a person, but you get, you record it in your language and then within 24 hours, we return the call. So I'm just thinking out loud, if you brought that up and you brought up, I, I forgot about that. So that's been operating since late March.
Perhaps just some of these, I know some of the letters, I won't say are boilerplate, but sort of the timelines and stuff, we may want to almost generate those. Does that make any, and I, like I said, I certainly defer to staff, but just something to think about. All right, any more on that one? All right. All right, moving on to ten, point ten, adoption of the, of a proposed new policy forty one thirteen, standards of professional conduct for employees. This has come through the governance committee, has been vetted by a variety of, of sources. Love for the board, I'm sure to have additional insight. Ms. Randall, as head of the governance, is there any comments you would like to make on this before?
I, no, I don't have any additional. I think that we've worked it through and put everything out there already.
I have a quick question. When this was completed, when we, we voted to accept it in its final version after we had legal review, did anybody pass this by the SEA? I'd rather get their input on it now than the day before we have to vote on it.
I don't, I did not.
I, I did not. We passed the technology part among people in the technology field, but not.
And we did HR.
In the past, we, things like this that were tied directly to the staff, we give the final, the final version that we had to SEA to make any final comments.
I think that's.
We have, we have the ability to accept them or not accept them. But it, it showed those good faith and we're trying to keep them in the.
Yeah, I can go ahead and email Robin. Ms. Young first, I think.
Yeah, so, I'm going on to school division resources. I did, I was wondering if we could add something in there that says that all email communication that is written belongs to the school and that the school deserves to provide to use it if it's been abused. Is that?
I'm going to defer that to Dr. Kizner, is there a Mr. Cook? I, I know this was something discussed.
And then, that was one, maybe let's step up because I remember in one of the meetings that we were in that, you know, it was abused and we weren't able to get the information off of the computer flash, you know.
Right. I think that opening sentence when we talk about the employee show you school division resources. And so I think we were trying to make it fairly broad and it could be computer time or property only for legitimate school business. But, I mean, it can certainly be expanded, but I believe that was somewhat, some of the focus of trying to cover legitimate school purposes. And Ms. Boatright, feel free, or Mr. Burnett, feel free to jump in if I'm misstating.
No, I don't think that you've misstated there. We were trying to be as broad as possible and also to make it consistent with the school divisions or the school board's policy, acceptable use policy. So, yeah, it's, it's as broad as it needs to be unless you all, you know, think that there are some other things that need to be added to cover some bases.
Can I, yes, yeah, so, and, and I, you know, I, I kind of read through.
I have one more, then you're done.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless you're doing the same one.
Yeah, and, and so in looking at this one, that, that number two, that Ms. Young mentioned, and that talks about that personal use of the school division's internet connection. It doesn't prohibit that, it doesn't prohibit employees from the occasional personal use of emails. Just how, how do we feel about employees perhaps posting to social media sites during their work day? And is that prohibited somewhere else in here and I'm just missing it or? Wasn't that addressed by Jennifer Parrish? And if they have planning time, they have personal time during the day, so how do we know? You know what I'm saying? Like, there's usually like a timestamp when you post something. So if you're posting something and it's not during your personal time, what if it's something to do with the curriculum? What if it's?
You know what, let's defer, let's, let's, let's ask, defer, great question, to Ms. Boatright or Mr. Burnett, either one, how we think that particular example could be or would be covered within the policy.
And it isn't just teachers, I mean administrators, anybody.
Right.
Is there entirely any personal thing?
Right, but I thought we had addressed that.
Well, let's, let's, let's let our experts.
Sure. So, because at my company, like, it belongs to them. And if you've got it in your mind, it's not yours. Anything that you post could be pulled at any time. So you just got to make sure that you're doing work-related stuff. So the other one I have.
Ms. Healy, just let me just give them a quick spot, ability response to that. Not, I don't want to stack them because then somebody feels like they haven't gotten their answers.
Gotcha. Well, I, I do want to base on Dr. Chase's question, if the sentence, or at number two, right, school division resources. The term legitimate school business, is that?
Well, but, but the problem is you end it with employees from the occasional personal use of emails. That's not legitimate school business, that's.
Why, why does that have to be evenly there? They, they do it, then they do it, but they need to know that it's not theirs.
I, I was going to say this, and, and, and there's people on the phone that could address also. There's got to be an element of that, of practices in here. Somebody, you know, has that forty, sixty minute timeframe where they, they go on, they're checking something. It may not, you know, versus something they're checking that they should be checking. So like, if they're checking their SunTrust account, that might be different than checking, how do you make a bomb? Okay, so, and then the other thing is, you know, how do we, in a sense, police these things? You, you're totally right, everything, all of us, anytime we use our server, your email is archived and that's what the law is all about. People get anything they want. So anybody who thinks that you're writing something to somebody in secrecy is just wrong. You know, get out, Lisa or, or, or Jay, do you want to respond to number two?
This is Patrick Burnett, I can jump in.
Who that, Patrick?
Yeah.
Patrick, you talk a little louder, they didn't sound there.
Sorry, I'll try to talk louder, is this a little better?
Yeah.
Um, I think that the short answer to the question is that, you know, what was stated by Dr. Kizner is that there is meant to be some discretion here to recognize that not all actions are created independently. So a statement that prohibits posts to social media would prohibit a principal from posting accolades for, you know, from a personal account. And in the same way, when we talk about using division resources for legitimate business purposes, I don't think any of us would stand in the way of someone picking up a pen that was part of a division supply closet to, you know, write a note or write a check in their, in their purse. So I think that the reason that we elected to include the language that was specific about the wifi and email was because that was such a frequent question.
Can you pitch your vocal a little bit?
I'll wait a minute.
So to sort of clarify what you're saying, because the technology is so integrated right now, like, if you check your, to make sure your student got home from school correctly, safely, it might go over the Stafford County wifi to do that. So it, it's just really tough to separate, to tease those things apart because it is so integrated. So we didn't want to bring, we didn't want to put people into a position where they would not, it wouldn't be practical to have that and it would be widely ignored because it's really is, be broken every single day by almost everyone. So that's kind of the thinking where, why that's in there or that.
Yeah, and I, I still didn't understand, but I'll move on to the next one. But basically, all I'm saying is that staff needs to know that if they use the, you know, the computer or anything that belongs to, you know, this, this, the school system, that it doesn't belong to them. So anytime they use it, if they go social media and, and they pull down ugly apps and somebody turn them in, we will pull it and, yeah, you, you will get in trouble because you're not supposed to be doing that. We're not going to wait until you trouble a child and, you know, to go that route.
I, I also want to point out though that, and, and Dr. Kizner was very fair in reminding us that this is not going to stop a bad move by a teacher, they're still going to. But what I think this is helpful in is, I mean, truly nothing on here, I think is, but we definitely got it by SEA. But I don't think anything in here is like bone chilling to where we're trying to degrade or take away the profession. If anything, most of the teachers are going to scroll through this and say, this is what we do. Of course, we're professionals. But we're also realizing and sensitive to the fact that sometimes there are some people that, that it's just not, even to know that and they're like, what? I didn't know. So what we're trying to avoid is that piece. But I want to say ninety-nine percent of our staff are just going to scroll through this and be like, yeah, I already know this, I'm a professional. And we want to honor that and we want to protect that. And then for those that are like, you know what, I'm going to do what I'm going to do. Well, then we might see that and that's the point, I don't know. But we just want to make sure that, you know, we are not ruling out a disciplinary code. We are honoring the fact that they're professionals and most of this is what we would term common sense. And we're, we're just trying to protect them from, you know, and also I, I've heard from so many teachers that are veteran teachers that sometimes a new teacher, they're like, what, how, why are you doing that? You can't do that. And so, instead of having to help out in a way that's frustrating, that now there's something, somebody that we just took that and did it for them, so you don't have to.
Police another.
Yeah, you can just do.
And that's fine, I'm hoping that they need to sign off on this because I, what I don't want is somebody scrolling through it and say, like Dr. Kizner said earlier, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, and that can still happen too.
Sign off.
And that can happen too.
Then I could move on a little bit. And get that second one.
Yeah.
Um, the other one I had was seven. And it's very short, but at no time shall an employee conduct, uh, or relationship, at no time shall an employee's conduct a relationship with a student impede or negatively affect the student's education or the participation in educa-, yeah. Okay, so basically, what I'm saying is, um, that happens. And I thought, I wanted it to be a little bit more specific, especially now. Because even if you put it in writing, it's still being done.
Yeah.
So is there somewhere that, um, I'm not just talking about bullying, but.
Well, that's listed in the next letter. Like, you read letter A, and that's under letter B. So if you're scrolling down.
I thought it did go up a little bit.
I know, it looks like it's a different number, but it's not. It's on the next page and it says B. And it says that, uh, that a student has been subjected to discrimination, bullying, or sexual harassment at school. Employees shall not use their position, their influence, their authority.
No, they use their position of authority and discriminate such a student or member of school.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it goes, it does divide it out, it just does it on the next page. I don't know if that's helpful or not. It may not.
So, so, no, I read that, right?
Okay, okay.
Student has been subjected to discrimination, bullying, or sexual harassment, um, at school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and so, what I was thinking, if we wanted to take it a, a next step, and I don't know, this is, you know, y'all need to tell me if I'm going overboard, but to put the words in there that says that you can't, you know, you're biased or you're, you're racist or you're microaggression, um, all, all of this stuff, you know, undertones that we can't explain that it happens, right? But it does. And so, it's always on the ownership of the student to prove that they're, they were discriminated against or they heard some things that they know clearly they shouldn't have heard. People apologize usually if I say, well, really you said X, Y, Z. And they're like, oh, I didn't know. I'm so sorry I heard you, because I, I hear it all the time. But sometimes they do know.
Mm-hmm.
But if we put it in writing that, hey, then they, they are aware. This is just something that I was thinking out loud that I thought I was, yeah, people would, it's not gonna hurt, but again, I mean, that's clear.
No, one, one big leak, I just want you to at least appreciate, is now this says, okay, you hear this, I was aware of this, but I never did anything. Now it's saying not may, shall. So if a teacher is aware that another colleague is doing something that they shouldn't, which, you know, the discrimination public touches, you, they have a duty to report.
Report, yes.
And which is different than just being a bystander and saying, that's not. So, it's, it's moved in the right direction to protect the, the children and the issues that you're addressing. But if you want to consider other language, sending it to Susan, we've been alerted by, uh, you know, people on the scene.
And, if I could just make a comment.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate your comments. I think once we, um, ascertain what our employee training or looks like and what expectations come out of that, I believe we can always come back to this policy and tie it to what the division, um, may be, um, offering or, or training. We may come out of that sort of an additional code of conduct that could clarify that. I, I know this is more the broader language, we really tried to kind of come up with, um, the impact there. But I don't believe this is a document that is a one-time. I think this comes every year. And if we, um,
And we'll also have to change.
Be committed to that training out of that making, and I can't name them. There may be some things, but then everybody who reads this policy is going, yes, I went through, I'm just gonna call it X, Y, Z training, so I don't know, I don't know. I know exactly where that's coming from and I know what that expectation is. And I, for me, this is all setting expectations. I believe that, um, you know, by and large, we, we have a very dedicated and amazing staff. But I, I'm not going to, you know, sugarcoat it either. We are also in a teaching crisis. And, you know, that we want to be very careful on who we, um, you know, hire and stuff. And I know that our, our division does a great job. But, as we see in other areas too, there can be challenges. And I would like to make sure that Dr. Kizner and his team have tools that they can go immediately to should there be a situation that warrants an action. Um, in the past, some of us have felt challenged in, in that way.
Yeah.
And this was a way to start that. But I also think it speaks to Stafford County and what we stand for and what we find important. And I think that's important for any division.
Now, this would be an example of something that we wouldn't do one and done.
Oh, yeah.
This would be ongoing reminders, discussion. I think people would appreciate it, which could, as we're having conversation, I hope this would lead into conversation, not just be seen as a rulebook.
No.
This is a way, you know, to build a better climate for us to.
Can I, I have another, um, and, and I do wanna say for people listening that sometimes the school board has a slightly different view of things because we do have personnel things. And so, some of what we're, we're like, oh, well.
Asociates.
Yeah, it's not because, it's not because we think everybody who's a teacher is gonna do whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, for number eight, electronic, electronic communication with students. I think I read in your minutes, there was some discussion about whether parents needed to be notified or have permission. And I, I, maybe I'm just missing where that language is, or maybe you weren't able to include that language. But it says, uh, under A, employees may use electronic communications with students using a school-approved device on school-approved platforms only for legitimate purposes connected to school programs. So, um, but there's somewhere it says you can use your personal device to send
So what, um,
Schedule changes or?
Lisa, you, you brought up a really good point about this. Do you wanna share that with her? When you were talking about your, uh, leadership with your church group?
Sure, sure. So I, I think that what, um, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Chase is talking about the, uh, you were talking about A or were you talking about D?
Were you at eight? You were eight, eight as in the number eight.
Yeah, and I think, I think D is, is where I was trying to, what I meant that I couldn't remember.
Right. Right, so, so one of the points that I had brought up, um, and was discussing with Jennifer Parrish is that, um, employees are not one-dimensional. So, um, an employee may also be, and I'm just gonna use this example, a leader of a church group. Um, and that church group communicates via a social media platform. And some of the students in that church group very well could be Stafford County Public School students. Um, so employees have more than just one dimension of their lives in terms of work. They have civic and community, um, lives as well. And that may involve some contact with individual students who, who are Stafford County Public School students. So, it was kind of hard to, you know, just, just say that employees may not have any contact with students using social media without their parents involved when they, they have another aspect and dimension of, of their lives as well.
Because, uh, uh, in what, in our one part, we wanted it to be done where, um, there couldn't be one-on-one, it had to have
Right.
the safety of. And so, that's when she went and talked about, you know, I mean, because in our theory, like you were saying, you know, in our mind, because of experiences or things that, you know, we have to be too. Um, that would be reasonable. But then, what's people that are actually doing and having to deal with and stuff, we needed to be considerate of that as well. But, like he said, this is fluid enough that if that doesn't work, we can definitely revisit and rein it a different way. But, you know, again, we're not trying to, you know, pigeonhole these professionals. We're not trying to make them march a different line. You know, we want them to continue doing what they want and we have these as safeguards to their profession.
So, can I, can I just piggyback on what Dr. Chase was saying? Um, I, I wouldn't see a problem with it if it's to the group, but not individual kids. It should not be individual students, ever. It could be a group, like if it's a group football, because you're not gonna talk to one, one kid, you know, about.
Well, and what she was saying is that sometimes it is the one kid because you've accounted, you're on a field trip and you've accounted for your group and one person isn't there. You're gonna say, get on the bus to that one kid.
I have to, Jennifer.
Yeah.
Perfect example is general T C. They're broken up into platoons, and each platoon has a leader. And then you've got your, your, uh, the leadership, the instructors are communicating to the platoon leader who then reaches out to everybody in the platoon.
Still think it should be.
So, so there are instances where that.
I still think it should be improved because we're protecting these kids, right?
We're, we're trying to get these, these kids prepared for the military, that's how the military works.
Yeah.
When they go out there, that's when, you know, even if they don't, but while they're here. This is just me, but I'm just one.
I know. And, and like I said, and even if, if we say it should be that way, you know, there could still be someone who doesn't do that way and they're completely legitimate. They're saying, get on the bus. Or, you know, where are you? Or whatever that one text is, and now they're in violation of the code of conduct and they were legitimately safely trying to get that chat.
If there's no harm done, then there's no harm done. But if harm's done, we don't have anything there, then, you know, I mean, you're gonna cry wolf later, but that's.
Okay.
Okay. I think, sure. Um, I, I'd just like to suggest that once we have this in place, that we have an evaluation and that that evaluation, you sometime over the course of the next year, will give us an opportunity to see where, um, you know, where there may be needs or some change. I mean, we've gotta start somewhere. We've been talking about this for a long time. And I really appreciate the work the Governance Committee has done to, to get it to this point, to bring it forward. And, you know, I, I, I think, like anything that is a new policy, there's, there's gonna be ways to improve it. Um, but that, the, the important thing is that we have a mechanism in place to evaluate it and to, and to look at, say, this time next year, what changes can we make that will enhance it? One thing I, I would like to, to somehow put in here, and maybe not in this policy, but as part of the practice, is, is a way for parents to provide feedback on this. Because sometimes, you know, the parents will have more personal information, whether it's with respect to their child or, or their friend's children. Whether, there may be an issue or, or something that is, is a problem perceived by, by that parent that affects a child, and there's gotta be some way to provide that feedback as well. So, I, I'm not saying we should put it in here because I think we need to, to start somewhere. But as, as this moves forward, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be important.
Do you have Dr. Kizner's parent advisory committee?
No, he died, he has that eight hundred number two, so. One eight hundred Kizner.
He's over there just making his list, man. So, like, I, I, I think the takeaways from this is we will be sharing with, um, S E A or other teacher groups or those that, that we know. Because we wanna also meet their needs. Because one of the things that was discussed as we are moving into this hybrid delivery model through a lot of technology, um, there may be also an expectation, and I believe an unrealistic one, that the teacher is going to be always in. And I, I want to make sure that, um, they may not have to be the two AM, you know, tech call or whatever. But, you know, I, I, I see this too as something really to be looked at as we move into a different, as Dr. Kizner said, our learning experience is going to change. And I think, beginning to put the guardrails out there, we can certainly be developing them. But I would really not like to be caught unawares in these. Um, and I believe, Ms. Yijin?
Yeah, one, one more real quick thing. I know, um, Dr. Kizner mentioned on several occasions that, um, plan on taking care of, and, you know, the, um, kids that are, have disabilities, um, you know, five or four, things of that nature. But do we have something in place that when we move to online, you know, uh, the hybrid model?
Yeah.
That those kids that have sign language, um, you know, that's all they know? How are we going to work with those if we are doing that online hybrid? Is that a good consideration?
Again, if you want me to address, there's, as I stated, there's gonna be some children that we're gonna need to get in the go.
Yeah.
And, um, I just also wanna correct something because I was correct. We do everything in five languages, not just two.
I, 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 so that's why I kept looking at you like when you said two. I was like, I wasn't gonna call you out.
The beauty of technology that people are.
No, 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 no.
Real-time correction, which is great.
Yeah, no, that's why I just looked at you probably there and I'm like.
Hmm, they must have seen you look.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that correction.
I appreciate this discussion, um, everybody, and, um, again, I think of additional, if, if, you know, send them into season or to this resource you can share with the board. Um, so that, um, Lisa and Patrick and those that have been very instrumental, Dr. Kizner as well, in, in moving this forward. I, I appreciate all the work. Um, our last item on the agenda is the review of the memorandum of understanding, which is attached between the school division and the sheriff's office for school, uh, resource officers. I'm gonna ask, um, Ms. Yijin and Dr. Chase if you wanna start to lead on this discuss, or lead with.
Yeah, and, and sure, and, and just for everyone's knowledge, um, you know, the public also, this is not something that just came because of George Floyd. Um, this is something that I was looking at for a while and I talked to Dr. Kizner about it. So we were mulling over it and then I needed to get it on the agenda. And then I asked, um, Dr. Chase, um, to second it. So, um, all of these things that we, we, we said before, these are things that we've been working on. But now that we're trusted into the light, you know, I've heard during these marches, um, that, you know, school board and, you know, vote them out. And I'm like, if that's what you wanna do, then it's fine. But I'm doing my job, we're doing our job here, so I want you all to know that. No emails. Um, so in terms of the memorandum of understanding, I did have conversations with, um, with, uh, Mrs. Decatur also about this. And, um, the individual that's in the position right now as the lead, I've gotten some complaints. And so, I went on to try to figure out what they do and how they do it. And, um, then I looked at this and it had twenty eighteen on it. So I thought perhaps, um, it will be a good opportunity for us to look at it. And if we need to add anything in there that, that we could do that now. Simply because I, I, I read through it, there's a lot of language, but there's, there's a lot of things that are, just stand out to me and I'm not gonna go through them for the sake of time if I have to, y'all have questions. But there are just some stuff that, that just, um, bothered me, um, and some of the language. And I did ask Missy to pull the, the, the responsibilities. And if you look at the, I don't know if you got it in your mailbox, but, um, ooh, when I looked at, um, essential functions and typical tasks, it's not on the MOU. Um, but i- it's just like a cop enforcing laws and criminal activity and patrol vehicle. And, 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 and so, I, I just want to know what they do exactly with our, with our kids, because they are kids. And, um, that there's some feeling, and it happened to my child, right? There's a feeling, um, for young, um, black students, uh, the fear of the police. And I know some people cannot understand what that fear is about. But you may say that, well, you're raising your child to fear the police. No, I'm raising my children to survive the police. And so when children are in the school system, they walk straight, they, you know, they try to avoid, you know, the S R O. And, but there are S R Os that pick on these kids on purpose. And so, we, we need to make sure that we have, uh, the right culture and the right S R Os and that we look at the MOU and, as I said, have a conversation, uh, about where we go from here.
So, um, Dr. Kizner, are we currently with this MOU? Are we able to request that an S R O be, be assigned if we have concerns?
Well, I read through the MOU prior to this, we need to get to that question. Well, I read through the MOU prior to this meeting to get to that question, and I don't necessarily see that as to be an ask, but it's not a requirement. The other section, if you're going to look at changing some MOU, it seems right now it's a unilateral decision by the sheriff's department on whose place in our schools. It might be a better strategy to at least have a collaborative interview, so it could be a better understanding of the schools and better.
Better match.
What's that?
Better match.
Better match, and let the future SRO ask more about the school climate and culture. So that was one thing that stood out to me as I reread. I noticed that I did sign it two months into your job in 2018. I probably didn't read it that well at that time.
Can I also ask you? I sit on here.
Susan, if you could go on. I have an issue to bring up. We talked about things that had to do with school security in an open environment, and we probably shouldn't have. This is being broadcast. This is something I think we should give the sheriff's office an opportunity to get with us and talk with us about, instead of coming out of left field. And I understand you had a conversation with him, but I haven't, and I don't think the rest of the board members have. So I don't know if, Missy, is this public? Is this on the agenda, or is this?
It is public, yes.
Okay, so I don't know if this was intended to be public with the sheriff's department, the MOU, and the job description, but I'd like to get that clarified before we keep it on here as part of the public information. There are certain things that we have at the sheriff's office that is confidential, that we shouldn't be putting out there, and maybe that job description could be one of them. Given the bad guys an idea of what the SROs are covering in the school, probably not a good way to put information out there. So I would just ask that, you know, in the future, or even going forward with this agenda, I'm with you. Nobody, everybody knows that I had an issue last year. I had a conversation with Lisa about it. We talked about the MOU. This is something we should probably have a closed session about, and really pull up our sleeves, get into it, and then invite Sheriff Decatur in to have that conversation.
Yeah, the responsibilities is not, it's in your email box, but it's not attached to it.
It's not attached to the agenda?
No.
Perfect. But the MOU is.
The MOU is.
Okay. The job description was what scared me a little bit more than the MOU, but going forward, I would prefer common courtesy, let's have a, let's talk about it as a group. We and I have major concerns, which I would like to address, but I don't think it's something that we should be talking about publicly.
Yeah, no, he was aware I was going to speak.
Okay. Until we get to an area that we're all comfortable with, but it's not in public.
And then I wanted to say that, you know, I'm not personally at a place where I want to get rid of SROs. I think this will shoot readings that it is.
Safety.
That there's a safety component, so I, just in case people think that that's what's going on, that's not where I'm coming from. But I did want to ask maybe Dr. Kizner to talk to staff in the building about SROs, and if there's anything that we need to be thinking about, and again, bring that when we have a work session to talk about this.
Yeah, and I would like to invite Sheriff Decatur. I just had a very good working relationship with the sheriff's department, and I want to, that's one of the things that I ran on, was continuing that good relationship and making sure that our students and our staff are safe.
No, he has been awesome this past weekend. As a matter of fact, it was Sheriff Decatur, actually, that had us, you be able to use Stafford County Building for most of the marches. And as a matter of fact, on Saturday, we had a procession for Black Lives Matter, and it was probably about 100-plus cars, I don't even know how many, and he actually had the police department escort us, right, all the way through. And so he is very much on board on making sure that the relationship continues. And yes, we're not here to get rid of SROs because we need them. It's about the safety of the staff and the students. And they do have to take their job, because we do have, you know, kids that aren't going to act up, and kids coming in with guns, or whatever the case might be, so we do need that. But what I do want is that students have a culture that they can trust, that they're there, because they're, like Dr. Chase said, they work for us, we pay our taxes, and so that's a relationship. Parents, they come home and they talk about it, so we know it exists, we just need to make a better relationship building there.
Forward to work with them, making that better.
Ms. Randall, did you have a comment?
I just saw on here, and so just wondered, it said something about evaluation and progress towards achieving objectives and reviewed annually. Has that been done? No?
So this is what I think happened. After the Parkland shooting, Parkland shooter, the school, this was a week before my time, we organized this community of school safety task force, and, which was great. And they did some work, and you saw the report in September of maybe 19. So I'm not pointing, but we do have a very good working relationship with the sheriff's department, and it's more than just Sheriff Decatur. A lot of other offices that we could call up, and they are there. But that committee needs some more energy, and more intentionality and focus, okay? It's something where we're in a process of interviewing for that other security person that I was going to have as our point person along with Mr. Martin, and I think it's a good conversation with Sheriff Decatur. I could only imagine how busy he is, I know how busy I am. Who does he want to assign as the point people, and really get that committee back, because I just, yeah, not pointing blame, you could place the blame on me. September to March, I don't recall having a meeting. I think we had one meeting just to review something for a brief time, so there has been no evaluation. Just answered your question. There was evaluation, maybe a little bit more than a year ago, and that's the last time I could think of an evaluation.
Okay. And can I say one other thing for anybody who might be listening, because people talk about we should use the money for SROs for something else? And I just want to make sure people who are listening understand that SROs are employees of the sheriff's office, and they are funded by county dollars, not by school board dollars. And so we do not have the ability to shift those funds to something else in the school system. So I just want to make sure people know that.
And I just want to maybe say one thing to Ms. Young. They're not really, they don't really report to us.
Right.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, okay, I thought maybe I heard somebody say it. So overall, that MOU, I actually felt was pretty good. I don't know, I think we, no, I didn't see a lot of issues with that MOU, I was just on the hiring part. I just think it just helps that person who gets the position. But overall, we're pretty much using the state template, but I think there was probably a lot of discussion before that model was put out there for people. Because I've seen that, and I think it's pretty much the same one that we used in Harrisonburg.
I just wanted to reiterate what I'm hearing from my colleagues here, that we have an outstanding relationship with our sheriff's department, and I very much appreciate Sheriff Decatur and the staff. And if we have issues in particular instances, and I would not even say, you know, it's across the board, or even a high number, it's incumbent upon us to make the sheriff aware of that, so that he can take action to address it. And it may be something, from a long-term perspective, that we want to set up an ad hoc committee of the school board. If this is something the school board wants to take, you know, under our responsibility, then we should have an ability to work directly with the sheriff. And I know Dr. Kizner has an excellent working relationship with the sheriff. But if we're, you know, looking at potential climate changes, then we need to come up with a way to address it, because I don't want anyone to think that we are, well, speaking for myself, you know, I'm not going to be criticizing the sheriff's office for this when they have done nothing but tried to help us. Now, there may be, as in any profession or any group, people that may not be needing our needs or our expectations, but it's our job to let them know what our needs are. And if they aren't able to do that, then we need to request a replacement. But I don't want any SRO at this point to feel that we don't want them in our schools, because I'm very appreciative of the SROs. And one of the points of that program to begin with was to make our students comfortable in dealing with law enforcement, and to establish those relationships. And if we haven't done that across the board, then we need to make a change so that we are accomplishing.
And the expansion of the program into the elementary schools came at our request.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Young. So with regard to this item, I want to see, are we awaiting either additional input, actually, from Dr. Kizner? I just want to make sure we don't let it.
Yeah, so, Irene?
I think if we do maybe an hour work session, maybe we can tack that on to Monday, and we can have this as a topic of conversation. We can, you know, look at the MOU together as a group and figure out what we're comfortable with, what we're not comfortable with, where it needs to be improved from what we're hearing from our students and maybe our staff, and then invite Sheriff Decatur in at some point and prepare it for signature based on his response to our concerns.
Irene, should it be a closed session if we're also going to talk about responsibilities?
I would think that at least that part should be closed session, because.
Well, I think it's a closed session anyways with the security thing anyways, the security report.
That's probably a good place to do it. Keep it.
But you want. Do you want to add that on Monday? You will be here.
Yeah, I don't think for that portion. I think.
Do we all need to do that on Monday? I mean, this is a long-term investment.
Yeah, that's.
Between Stafford County Public Schools and the sheriff's department. I think we need to be looking at, you know, what are our expectations, what will we like to see come out of this, and then address it. I mean, this is, it's not like we're going to be starting school, you know, next month. But I'd like to see, if we're going to make a change, let's make the change that we need. And let's get input from the sheriff as well, because there may be some things that we see that may not be practical, or there may be some changes that the sheriff's office has to suggest that may make a better process. Let's have this be a dialogue rather than a dictation.
And if I could just add one other per group to that dialogue, and I think what Dr. Chase might have been responding to a little bit, and Sheriff Decatur was there, which was great. Some of the students at Friday's panel, talking about their feelings about school resource officers. So I think it would be important to create a dialogue, a forum, sort of.
Which has been ready to say it already exists.
Their experiences, and I believe, and Sheriff Decatur, in my opinion, handled it very well and explained. So I'm just saying, this is what might be driving a little bit of this conversation right now.
Can I add to that? It already exists. So there is a task force, that's the reason why I sent Dr. Warner and Dr. Chase to it, that panel. There's some of the individuals from that panel are going to be part of the task force, but that is with the public, but we could certainly kind of pull from there. So Mr. Decatur is already part of the task force with the public, and with some of those individuals from that group on that date. I don't know if you're going to be part of that, but I couldn't make it, and so therefore I sent two representatives, and they, from what I understand, the feedback that I received, they were very well received, and I received high comments about how well they listened to our students. So with that said, Mr. Decatur, you know, did approve that I speak about the MOU, and then get back with him as to what we plan on doing, but certainly we could invite him. And it's not just the paper, it's more about the relationship and the change of culture, and how you address individuals. You know, if you're going to say, Kirby black girl, your shorts are too short, and the same length from another skinny girl that happens to be white, and that black girl looks at that and say, why me? Why am I different? That hurts. And so it's just things that we need to change, just in general, it's going to take time. I know, it takes time for me to understand, you know, my allies sometimes, and so it's a matter of time, and it's a matter of working together. I think we will get there, but we just need to make the change as soon as possible, and we're moving in the right direction, is all I'm saying.
Do we have, do you know when we're going to be doing the security update brief, whatever?
Well, it's really, at this point, you just got to let me know the date.
If I can make one comment on that. And Dr. Kizner, you already went where I was going. We are having, or in the process of hiring, correct, somebody in that security realm. And I know we made a budget decision somewhat deferring to that person coming on board. I would not, but it's going to take months to get them up, please know I'm not saying that, but if we see that that could be a hire within two to three weeks or something, I would really want to make sure that that individual starts at the bottom.
And in my updates, I was going to interview those on Friday, so I could let you know by Monday.
Okay, okay. Just because I don't want somebody to kind of come in and say, oh, hey, we've already kind of mapped out your job, and believe me, that is not my area of expertise. So like I said, please don't say it's a delay, but I also, part of it, we are talking relationships. Having a new person coming in and supporting Mr. Martin and the other team members that are in there, if that person's going to be in that position, I would love for them to be on the ground floor, if possible, without that, so maybe we can await that. Still keeping it on the two to three week, you know, action, so that it doesn't get lost. But I also would hate for them to say, oh, we have that meeting right before you got here, just in deference to them, too. Is that?
Yeah. Again, I just, not because you guys are going to have a closed session to talk about them, I would give you a compliment.
No, I think we're not.
I do like.
We're going home.
While you start, I just have to be in a good mood, I want you to have. But I would say, I really enjoy this conversation, because I just feel like we're talking about, you know, things that maybe we didn't talk about in the past. Not that you haven't thought about it, but we're just talking about it. And I think we could do that with the, Sergeant Pomeroy would be another one I would ask the sheriff to invite, because he actually oversees the SRO.
All right. If there is nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting, coming back 5:30 on Monday. We will, believe we'll be here, but we will coordinate, believe we will have that, and it will be noticed, so.
Madam Chairman, we're coming back for a work session. Could we add this, a special called meeting to have this closed session? I don't think it's going to take very long, but I do want to add personnel as well as the superintendent's evaluation, so I can give you that motion, and I have the code sections as well, but after the work session on Monday.
If for some reason there is something else that does come up, that we want to do a work session, I do value your time, I do value, though, our dialogue, so I know it, I am more of a, if we can divide a little bit each time, please not say that we show it, slow it down, but I do know at 10:30 at night, my ability and others may be waiting, so I look forward to seeing you all on Monday, and have a great day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.